Good evening, everyone. It is 6:30, so I will call our planning board meeting of January 16th to order, and I'll read the roll. John Crist, myself, I am present. Susan.
Present.
Phil.
Oi.
Neil.
Present.
Mike.
Here.
Matt.
Present.
And alternates, Zach is not present. Michael Bouchard.
Yep.
Are we still waiting for you to go?
No, I'm not sworn in.
You're sworn in?
Yep.
So you're on the other list.
Oh.
All right.
Give him the respect he deserves.
So we have a full board. Bradford Puffer.
Yo.
Molly.
Here.
And Jason.
That's me.
So we are all here. And since we have a full board now, there are no alternates to swear in or swear in to this evening. Of course, you're all welcome to join in the conversation. And so next up is review of minutes from January 2nd. I will thank our staff, who, whether it's you or Avery, again, for wonderful and thorough notes.
Thank you. It's full.
Okay.
Avery's doing a lot of work, too.
That was a lot.
We are fantastic.
Thank you.
I kind of forget how much we did at the end of the meeting.
Yeah, a lot. Huge.
There were lots of motions to move things to...
There were.
I'll say, there's a small typo on page nine.
Diligence.
There was a... Lost it. In the middle of the third paragraph, it says McCann asked if other requirements such as "high" would be lowered, and I believe it was meant to be "height."
On page two, there's a small typo at the third line up from the bottom. McCann says she supports opportunity in small business and does not think that the special exception wood is targeted. Is just wood target, or?
Probably is targeted.
Is targeted, yes. Thank you.
We should give a prize to whoever finds the best mistake.
Should've heard Sue when you weren't here.
I'll slip a 20 to Joseph just to have him put a good run in.
That's why I have no clue what happened.
I move that we approve the minutes with the amendments as noted.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the minutes are approved with those slight amendments. All right, up next, communications received. Joseph?
Sure. So there are a few communications. We have a letter from Mountain Village Charter School with regards to their site plan review, extension request, and continued compliance hearing request. That is in the packet. We also have a memo or a letter from Three Lakes Landscaping with regards to their continuation of the discussion of acceptance of their site plan review application, as well as a communication from a resident with regards to the Tenney Mountain overlay. And all those three are in the packet. We also have... The select board has appointed Michael Bouchard to his full member spot, so we acknowledged that earlier. And then also, the National Guard has communicated that they will be presenting this evening on their proposed plans for the armory site here in town. So I'm sure they'll give the board some good information on that this evening as well. And that is... That's all I have for communications.
All right, thank you. So we'll get to all those pertinent things as we move along. All right, with that, we have an extension compliance hearing on Mountain Village Charter School. And I've been excusing myself in these, and I will continue to do so, and hand it over to Sue.
So this is a... From the extension request compliance hearing for the Mountain Village Charter School for the one-year timeline for meeting site plan review conditions of approval and the two-year timeline for beginning active and substantial development. They both happen to come along at the same time. Request relates to a site plan to develop a three-building educational facility serving approximately 120 students, grades one through eight, on parcel 213-031 on Tenney Mountain Highway, along with associated site and drainage improvements. This will also include a continuation of a compliance hearing to review progress towards meeting conditions placed upon the site plan approval. So do we talk about the extension first, or do we open it up for a public hearing?
Yeah, so the extension request would... I would advise handling that one first. The extension request is sort of a two-in-one. It's an extension of one year... A one-year extension of the one-year timeline for meeting conditions of approval and a one-year extension of the two-year timeline for beginning active and substantial development. And that is subject to a public hearing on its own, the extension request.
So does anybody have any...
I would make... If we're going to be doing any vote, you might want to appoint one of the alternates to serve of the seven for now, just while John's sitting off of the side.
Okay, so I will appoint... Who's... It would be Brad.
Brad.
Yep.
As a sitting member for this item.
What's that?
For this item.
Yeah. So...
Thanks, Mike. So does anybody have any informa... Anything they want to discuss with this, or before we open up?
Do we want to give the applicant an opportunity to share?
Sure.
Yeah, nothing to discuss beforehand.
Okay.
Thank you. My name's Delaney Carrier. I am the chairman of the Board of Trustees for Mountain Village Charter School. I can speak to the request and answer any questions you all might have in regards.
Does anyone have any questions for him, or?
Do you have a timeline for the foreseeable future? What's your timeline look like?
Hopefully, two years if you approve tonight.
All right.
The long and the short is, our budget has not worked out for the initial plans. We are engaging in a fundraising program to try to bridge the gap between what we can finance and what the costs are going to be for this development. And we're hoping to have that... You know, we've started, and we're hoping to be able to achieve the goals before time runs out with this board.
So you still have plans to accomplish your original goals and...
That is currently our plan, yeah. Yep. And we have engaged with our architect to address the issues raised by the board here for our... With our site plan. So that is in progress. So hopefully, we'll get through that in relatively short order and raise a bunch of money and get this done, because we really, really want to have a solid, permanent home for our school.
So you'd be looking for two years on the active and substantial development? And how long for the compliance on the site plan would that be? How long would you be looking for that?
I'd like to request three months, just to hopefully get our architect and, you know, through that process.
Anybody else have any questions or comments or anything?
The only thing I'd note is that we are considering... We have moved zoning amendment to the voters that would change the underlying zoning of this parcel. But I don't see it as being... I don't see this project as being a bad fit for the new zone. I think it's probably a better fit for the new zone. So I would say that we should just acknowledge that the proposed... If the proposed zoning change were to go through, and we were to stick to the existing timeline, they would be applying for a new site plan in a new zone when they came back. Continuing this allows them to move forward with the proposal as it was, and I'm fine with that. I just think that some towns might object. It might... Someone who's really rigid might say, no, they've run out of time, we're going to deny this, they have to apply again in the new zone once that's approved.
Is it currently in ICD?
It's currently ag zone, I believe.
It is.
And we're proposing to change that area to ICD.
Did I read that they had gotten a special exception?
They do have a special exception, that's right. I do believe the parcel is split zoned.
Oh, I see, okay.
Which has a portion in ICD and a portion in ag, but they did receive a special exception.
But it would all be ag zone effectively, or it would all be ICD down the road, right?
I believe that's correct. I'd have to double check, but...
So I'm not... I don't mean to object to granting the extension. It's just a point of discussion.
Yeah. Okay, so do we open this up to a public hearing now? Okay, it's 6:45. Open this up to a public hearing. Anybody from the public have any comments or questions? Still 6:45.
Anybody online?
We have a couple of folks online, but nobody with their hand up or microphone unmuted.
Okay, so I'll close the public hearing at the back end of 6:45. So now we vote to the extension. Would anybody like to?
Is it one or two requests?
I think it's three, essentially. It's a year... Because this is the annual, they have to have had the compliance by this time, so we're extending that, right?
That and the one...
And then the construction.
Yeah, the timeline... So when they got their initial approval in January of last year, they had until this month to meet their conditions, and they had until January of next year to begin active and substantial development. What they've asked for is an extension of one year, you know, one more year to meet their conditions, and two years from now, so one additional year to begin active and substantial development. So that could be one or two motions, depending on if the board wanted to consider them separately. But they did make that as one request. And then, you're correct, that their additional request, the compliance hearing for three months would be another.
Three months. Would anyone like to make a motion on?
I'll make a motion, a single motion, to approve all three, meaning that we would grant a three-month extension to the compliance hearing, a one-year extension to active and substantial development, and one-year extension to... I need help on this one.
The compliance.
Beginning...
Three months.
Yep, the compliance. No, the compliance hearing was three months.
Yeah.
So continue that to April.
Meeting site plan review conditions.
Goes to April of this year.
Yeah, meeting the conditions of the site plan review. So my intent is to approve all three waiver... Extension requests in one motion.
So when's the final date?
So the three-month compliance would be... The final date would be 4/25, April of this year. The other extensions would be... It would go to 2026, next January, is that correct? Or 27?
It would be until... Excuse me, it would be until January of 2026 to meet conditions, and January of 2027.
Before I get a second, I'm going to amend my motion to extend the compliance hearing four months to the May 2025 planning board hearing.
That's in their letter.
Okay.
Which is what's in the letter. But I'm still waiting for a second.
I'd second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion, further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstained? So there you go. Congratulations.
So your first vote, Bradford?
I'm actually voting.
No, you voted.
You've been seated before?
You have, did you guess?
You got it.
He's voted, he's seconded motions.
Active member.
I forget. Yep. Good.
All right. Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
So next up, we have the site plan review application from Three Lakes Properties LLC for possible acceptance in public hearing. The application is to establish and expand a retail landscape material sales and retail greenhouse space on parcels 213, 012, 001, and 002, 03 and 04 located on both sides of Hamilton Way. So find my way through this here. So this is a site plan that we have not yet accepted, if I recall correctly. And... How do I find where I am in my notes? And the... And we were waiting for a few more materials before considering acceptance and then moving on to approval or public hear... And public hearings and all that. So I know we have some correspondence. Do we have any... No. Okay. Here we are. I think I finally found it. All right. So we have a letter from Colby. "Hi, Joseph, I was writing to inform you that we will need to hold off till the February meeting. I met with Kent and Mario today, and we decided it would be best to wait one more month to pull together a bit more information. I just wanted to update you and the town. Thank you for working with us." Colby. So it sounds like we're up for another month to receive further information, and it seems like things are moving forward. And so we do not actually need to hold a public hearing, because we haven't accepted this application yet. But we should decide whether or not we want to extend it for another month. And, you know, on the one hand, we've extended several months at this point, and quite some time. And at some point, you wonder about renoticing and all that, but at the same time, I... It seems like progress is being made, and another month seems reasonable, I think.
Yeah. Especially as working with an engineer now and they have the ball going. I'd make a motion to extend it another month.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right.
The only discussion is that we would be extending to February 20th.
Yes. I'm just saying yes, but I'm looking at my calendar, yes, that's true.
Is that the intent of your motion?
That is the intent of the motion.
Emotion.
Of the motion. The intent of the motion.
All right. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, so the motion is approved, and we are extending this to the 20th of February. And look forward to seeing what we get. So next up, under our applications and hearings, this is taking us back to our zoning amendments, which you might recall from last time, we had some changes to our zoning amendment for the Tenney Mountain Overlay District. And in order to move that forward, we decided if we're going to move that forward, we needed to have another public hearing, because we made some substantive changes. As a reminder to everyone out here, we can make non-substantive changes without having to go through the process again at another public hearing, but not substantive changes, which we did make some important ones last time at a late meeting. And I was actually happy to see just how coherent everything turned out, like at 10:30 at night. I know my... I was having a hard time thinking. Anyhow, so are there any thoughts from the board before we move this on? I should mention there is a legal review of the changes that we made, and I do not think that was in the packet, but it is over here.
Correct, yeah. You probably should have mentioned that as a communication, but it is in the stack of papers up front.
So I have not looked at this before this evening.
Sure.
So I'm just kind of looking through. There's a bunch of changes from master planning to pud plan, just to keep terminology consistent.
Yep. Would you like me to sort of read through the packet that the legal review resulted in?
Sure.
So on... I'll start sort of on page three, or the fourth page. So there are two comments on that page, which are change reference to a pud master plan to a pud plan. And that was something that the attorney had suggested for... To avoid confusion with the town's master plan, calling it a pud plan instead of a pud master plan. And then that is also referenced on the next page, on page... On page five or six here. The pages have fallen off. Two, three, five. Page five, there was one paragraph that the planning board did update at the last meeting. And the town attorney just suggests that the change to this paragraph suggests that ski areas and resorts don't need to be serviced by water and sewer, which is a comment in response to some change to the wording of the section referencing the requirement to tie a parcel into water and sewer. He doesn't have a specific request that the board do anything, but I think he was trying to call attention and just let the board know that that was the interpretation. Then, under a couple... Two more pages further along, where we get to the residential uses outside of a village core area, which was where the more substantive changes of last meeting took place. He proposes rephrasing that sentence that currently reads outside of a village... Or it currently reads, "The planning board may approve residential uses within a TMOD pud in accordance with the residential uses permitted in the underlying zoning district." He proposes rewording that to say, "Outside of a village core area, the planning board may approve any residential uses that are permitted in the underlying zoning district," clarifying that language referencing the residential uses permitted in the underlying district. Then, under F2, he does note that... He does make a proposed change to the substant... Or I would say, to the portion where the planning board amended to add a sentence confirming that heights shall be as measured from the average finished grade of land surrounding the structure. He proposes adding "to the highest point of the structure." In the beginning of that paragraph, he also does propose a strike-through, removing references to chimney and water tower in the beginning of that sentence, which references "except for structures not intended for human occupancy." So that is a portion of the... That's sort of a reference to the portion of the conventional height measurement standards of the zoning ordinance, which say that "except for superstructures not intended for human occupancy like chimneys and water towers, the maximum building height shall be 40 feet." It's really a, you know, recommended change, but ultimately, to the... Up to the board how to proceed there.
I'd like to return to that one. We'll get through this.
I would, too. I think it changes the intent.
I do it as well, so we can get back to that one.
Yep. And then the next sentence, or the F3, "In a pud where residential uses are proposed, the density shall not exceed five dwelling units per acre of the pud tract," instead of "across the pud." And then, "The overall residential density of a village core..." You know, he proposes rewording the following sentence, too. "The overall... The residential density of a village core area may exceed five dwelling units per acre, but shall not exceed 20 dwelling units per acre of the pud tract, provided the overall residential density of the pud shall not exceed five dwelling units per acre of the pud tract." So minor rewording there to sort of reorient and confirm that the total number of residential units allowed in the pud is five units per acre, but it may be exceeded up to 20 in the core. And I believe, other than a couple other references to master plan that are proposed to be changed to pud plan, those are the recommendations.
Okay. So most of the rewordings, I think, help clarify what's already there. And I would say, A, they're not substantive, and that... And they help clarify our intent, as we talked about in the last meeting. As I understand, like about the density and such. The one about the height, I think substantively changes what we talked about, and I think takes it out of compliance with the rest of our zoning ordinance. And we talked with the public, including the developers last time, of currently of Tenney Mountain, that... About how we measured height in town, and we all seemed to agree that that's what we wanted to go with. And this would seem to change that. And so to me, that looks like a substantive change, which, to make it this date, not agreeing upon it yet, is problematic anyway, and doesn't really fit the spirit, I think, of our conversation last time. Were you in agreement with that, what you were thinking, Phil, as well?
Yeah, so I think when we talked about it, my understanding, or my takeaway from our discussion, was that we would use the same standards that we use to regulate height in the zoning ordinance under Section 402. And to that end, I wonder if we could simply clarify this by referencing Section 402 of the zoning ordinance, which specifies everything except the 35... Where the... Section 402 says 35 feet and describes how you measure it, we should be using those same standards, except that the heights would be higher in the planned unit of development.
Mm-hmm.
Does that make sense to you, Jason?
Yeah, you just say, you know, referencing Section 402 for the measurement of heights of buildings.
Yeah, I guess we have to think about how to...
So because it's... Because the height reference there is different than here.
Yeah.
I wonder if it's... I mean, usually, it's easier to only change in one place and just reference it other place, so you don't have to worry about tracking changes if you make amendments later.
Right.
But in this case, it might just be easiest to redefine it here again, as it is in our zoning ordinance already, which I think is what our original language basically has here, at least in the spirit of it.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't want to make this change.
So, yeah.
For a whole host of reasons.
So if we hold our existing language, that's basically what's in 402A.
Mm-hmm.
402AI deals with lots in the village commercial specifically, so we don't need to include that. But I think we should include Section 402B, which is flagpoles located on roof or in your required yard may extend above the height limit. C, chimneys, spires, towers, stage houses, lightning rods, or like superstructure not used for human occupancy may extend above the height limit located on a structure of a main use. Freestanding chimneys or towers may be permitted only as a special exception by the Board of Adjustment. And D, radio or TV antennas for private non-commercial reception may be located on the roof or in the rear yard of a structure of a main use, but not in the required front yard. Ooh, that's a weird one. Does that even matter here?
So is it possible... I'm not looking at it in front of me right now, to reference that with... Is the height included in those paragraphs, or no?
So the height is included in paragraph... I think we can refer to Section 402B and C.
Okay. As ways of defining height.
Yeah.
And?
We can just say as...
And it's about 40 feet here.
Right. We can leave the text as we've written.
Okay.
And then... The problem with referring to Section 402 is if we renumber the zoning ordinance and that... We miss that reference, it's out of sync. But sometimes it's better to just copy and paste that language from 402B and 402C into the proposed language.
Which would be an administrative change, not a...
Yeah, so I'm going to propose that we don't include 402D, which is radio or TV antenna.
They can have a rock and radio station there.
Yeah. So is that a substantive change, or are we just clarifying?
I don't believe that is. I believe that's just clarifying.
Are we clarifying the intent of what we discussed last time? And we've adequately noticed that.
I believe we're clarifying the intent, because how we're defining height, I think, would only change if we actually took the revised version of this definition. I think that would be a change.
Right.
But I think what you're saying is just a better clarification of what our intent was, unless anyone disagrees.
I'm just trying to understand, when the last phrase, "to the highest point of the structure," does that seem to include the chimney and the water tower potentials?
So that's where C comes in, that says chimneys, spires, towers, stage houses, lighting rods, like superstructures not used for human occupation may extend above the height limit.
Yeah.
40 or 80 feet.
Yep.
Which is why the sentence especially...
Located on the structure of main use.
So the new...
That phrase especially is the... That phrase especially is a, is a problematic one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So instead of starting number F, F2, except for structures intended for hu, not intended for human occupancy, it would say something like, "The maximum building height shall be 40 feet, except in the village core." And then we'd have a subsection, just like in the zoning ordinance?
I think, I think where it says, where under F2, where, where it ends, you know, finished grade of the land surrounding the structure, we could add A, which would be the text from 402B zoning, and B, which would be the text from 402C in zoning.
Yep. I understand.
Yeah. That works for me.
Yep.
Does that sound good, Joseph?
That seems, I, I don't have any concerns about that on, on my end.
I just meant from like a technical perspective.
No, that, that's fine. We can easily do that.
All right.
Okay.
Any other responses to any of the comments here?
I just think it's funny that we're calling it a planned unit development plan.
Yeah.
It could just be a.
Well, yeah.
PUD.
But it's, it's the plan for the planned uniting.
Yeah, I understand. It's fine.
I was thinking about this, big picture, I was thinking about this today and, you know, my, my thinking about this is whether or not I might vote for this. I think the critical evaluation I'm trying to make today is, is this written in a way that if the voters approved it, it would be easily integrated into our zoning ordinance and be allowed to be implemented by the town? So, you know, I, I think our role as a planning board is, should be to consider the, the best intent of the town, create language that would allow that to be implemented cleanly and functionally. And then, I, I think that's what I'm, that's what I'm going to be focused on when I vote, when I vote here. And if it goes to the voters and they say, "No, we don't like this," I'm fine with that. But, you know, my thinking about this is, is this clean enough that if we're approved, the town would be able to move forward with this as an, as an approved part of the zoning ordinance?
Now, I would just say, I, we had a good amount of discussion with this, especially starting when we were doing the HOP, because there is a housing component.
Yeah.
And we had a lot of discussions about this. It wasn't one of our, our primary focus early on, but it became more and more of a focus towards the end. And I think Judy did a great job capturing those discussions and turning it into something usable. And I think we've made some good tweaks along the way to make sure everything works. My own personal take.
I also, you know, the, while the density is kind of scary, I, I think there's a lot of, there's a lot of potential for density already in the existing zoning regulations that we approved last year for the ag zone, with the addition of additional units at, you know, one per 2,500 square feet of space. Like, somebody who wanted to do a development of density could do it without the planned unit development, and, and they still could. You know, the planned unit development simply allows for us to, to help, to consider something like creating a village core or a small urban area amongst a bigger development that wouldn't be allowed using the underlying zoning.
We could consider the more kind of holistic intent and, yeah.
I, I think this is actually a good, a good planning tool. I really do.
I've been doing quite a bit of thinking about it, and I still have really large concerns regarding the water and sewer. And getting this letter that we got really confirmed a lot of my questions. And I think putting something like this in place kind of sets someone up for disaster because the water and sewer, I do think is an issue. I don't know that the sewer department can handle it. I don't know the water department can, at the water, I don't know all that, and I'm not getting those answers. So I just, I, I think more work needs to be done from the perspective of how is this going to work? You can't have something like this presented with that, on this large scale, without having any access to water and sewer.
Well, I, I think also, I mean, as a kind of response to that, whenever we get a site plan in, I think this will be similar, we always ask for input from affected departments and such. And I think we do very much the same here, I'd imagine, and ask for input from water and sewer. And if they say it's a no-go, like you can't do this, it's not going to work, that's, we'll consider that. And if they think it would work, just like any site plan, I think, you know, we, we get that feedback. I think that's where that happens.
Part of the, you know, a developer could bring us a PUD plan that included a small wastewater treatment facility and a well. You know, that's not out of the realm of possibilities. And I think, you know, denying this on the basis of our existing water and sewer might not handle this is presumptive of the fact that there might be resources in that area that somebody could build a small facility that would do that.
And it's really up to them to answer that question.
It really is.
To our satisfaction. And if they can, then, then we can go forward with it. And if they can't answer those questions, whether through their own onsite system or through our existing system, then we say no.
For what it's worth, I, I watched the construction of a really big sewer septic system for, that was sized for a 30-barrel brewery in Henneker Brewing Company. Like, they didn't have water and sewers. Like, they put in, I want to say it was over a million dollars for a septic system, but, you know, they're up and running and it was part of their business cost, and they make it work. Like, you can have really big septic systems, big fields, big tanks, not out of the realm of possibilities.
A PUD doesn't necessarily, I mean, in some ways, it would actually potentially give us more of a view into the potential of water and sewer problems, right? If we get like a larger scale plan flushed out and presented to us, we have more of an idea of what the potential impacts on water sewer could be, rather than like getting pieces and then ending up in a bad situation.
Well, we end up with more oversight insofar as, instead of getting like four separate site plans.
Yeah.
To have to juggle, or 40 separate site, site plans to juggle over like a decade and comparing them against one another. And each time, while one of them's already in process, we have to get, we get another one in, and we have to consider the last one, which is not even built yet, as we get another one. This does give us the ability to look at it all at once. For a larger development, which I think could be beneficial. I think that's what you're trying to say.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm.
Yeah.
I completely understand the concerns about water and sewer and that, I think that letter asks some really great questions, but more of the developer, maybe, than of us? Although obviously we have to consider water and sewer, but.
I, I did want to ask if you wanted me to read the letter for everyone before we go any further, but.
I think that would be a good, good idea to read that.
I'd write it, but yeah.
Okay.
The one from.
Might take me a few minutes.
It's a long letter.
In reference, in reference, she was.
Do you want me to read it?
But it's a very thoughtful letter, and I'd be happy to, or if you want to read it, you can read it as well.
But in reference to Judy DeLeo, she was a water and sewer commissioner for many, many, I'm not sure how many years, decades. So there's very few people besides Dick Flanders that knows the water and sewer demands and what those two individuals know. And this letter is, is pretty potent. So this kind of, it's dramatic. So thank you, Molly, for offering to read it.
Yeah.
Dramatically.
I, I'm trying to see if, do you have it?
Need a copy of it? You don't remember?
Oh, I don't have it memorized. Okay. "To the Plymouth Planning Board, at the January 2nd, 2025 Planning Board Meeting, we learned about the Tenney Mountain Overlay District, TMOD, being proposed in order to complete various development prospects on Tenney Mountain and the ski area. Before making dramatic changes to the zoning area, there are many questions that need to be answered first, based on historical information about the ski area and previous development attempts. What is being proposed in the area is just the newest version of the same story the town has heard in the past and has never come to fruition for some good reasons. Historical context about lack of water on the mountain only being served by sewer, not water, infrastructure. Failing mountain infrastructure leads to the need to have real answers to many questions prior to the board investing time and energy into making this huge overlay district. Currently, Tenney Mountain Ski Area has unreliable water infrastructure with a failing water supply. This supply impacts snowmaking capabilities and fire suppression necessary for updating the base lodge, which they cannot do because there is not enough water for the sprinkler system needed, as well as provide water for the residents already living in, on the mountain. All new development will require a reliable water source. Plymouth Village Water and Sewer District has worked diligently for 20-plus years to find a new well source for the 1,000-plus residents served by public water. The new well is not even located in Plymouth, it is in Holderness, because all the sites that were investigated did not give the yield or quality of water that the existing wells have. This new well is a backup source of water and does not have the necessary capacity to provide water for all the new development being proposed in the TMOD. Also, even if a new water source could be found, there is very limited ways to get the water from where it is currently to where it would be needed on Tenney Mountain. This does not even discuss the addition of the sewer services being needed. The P, the Plymouth Village Water and Sewer District wastewater treatment facility has a maximum capacity of 700,000 gallons per day. This does not take into consideration the 800,000 gallons per day that the developer has said that they need for build-out. The current wastewater facility footprint cannot be expanded where it is currently located. Hydrologically, the mountain is very limited in being able to access water. In the past, Plymouth Village Water and Sewer District has asked to help find a new water source for the ski area and mountain because of previous issues they were having. Hydrological studies showed very limited areas for new drilling. Plymouth Sewer Contractors drilled some test wells, and the study needed to be stopped because any sites that were found impacted the public and private wells already on the mountain and actually almost ran some wells dry. The developer stated that they need, they had a new hydrological, hydrological study done. It would be interesting to see if the hydrology of the mountain has changed that much over the past 10 years. Has any thought been given to the extra services that will be needed if the development happens as currently planned? Fire and police services would need, would potentially require satellite stations to be closer to the area where they would be needed. The schools would be impacted as well with all the new housing that is being proposed for families. All these additional services would need employees, equipment, new buildings, et cetera, all of which will negatively impact Plymouth taxes. The elephant in the room is the fact that Tenney Mountain is not a world-class ski resort. It is a very nice ski resort with good trails, and Plymouth is proud of our little mountain. But the topography limits what the mountain can become. We cannot compete with the likes of even Loon, Waterville, Killington, Stowe, let alone the impressive ski resorts out west. They have higher slopes, greater vertical drops, and more black diamonds than Tenney can hope to develop. The snow is also very different from the west. We have wetter, ice-ier conditions. Has anyone thought about how the changes in the climate are impacting snowmaking, snow conditions, and the length of the winter season overall? Have you contacted the other local ski resorts to find out how they are managing? If we put aside the ski trails, the developer has stated building a conference center, golf course, and more condos. What makes Tenney different from the other areas stated above? They all have a head start in the fact that they have all these, that they have these in existence. How does Tenney compete? What would make them different, any different? Loon, Waterville, and Cannon all have more natural areas right in their backyards for people to experience if they're not skiing. Hiking, biking trails, and other outdoor recreational activities are right there, i.e. Profile Lake or Cannon, for Cannon, excuse me. As for the condos and housing that are being suggested, besides the water and sewer issues already mentioned, who are these condos really for? Second homes, Airbnbs, time shares versus affordable housing for the service workers on the mountain and at the resort? Is the pay scale going to be that good that these employees will be able to afford to live there? Right now, the housing costs in Plymouth and the surrounding areas are so high that both working-class individuals and professionals, PSU, have declined jobs because they cannot afford to live here. Some of these individuals are living up to an hour away to commute to the area. How is this going to make it any different? The life sciences facility being proposed is going to be for lab, genetic research, a health clinic, question mark? Life sciences is a broad term and can encompass many things, medical, educational, agricultural, forestry, et cetera. Again, they will need infrastructure and employees. We are these, where, we are these trained professionals coming from, I think it's supposed to say where, are these professional, trained professionals coming from? And will the salaries be enough for them to work slash live here? And again, why Plymouth? Hanover, Durham, Concord, Nashua, and the Seacoast have more resources and options already readily available. The developer mentioned an additional 5,000 people potentially living and working in Plymouth. Does Plymouth want to double their population? Housing is tight and expensive now. How will this impact the current market? If we don't want Plymouth to be tilted, how does this project maintain Plymouth's friendly rural town feel? The planning board's favorable vote on the petition for changes to Article 1 for the ag zone seems to be in conflict with the proposed TMOD. Stated in section 505, TMOD Planned Unit Development, subsection H, paragraph 2, specific objectives. Every PUD in the TMOD shall incorporate several of the following elements. Together, these elements define a PUD and justify departures from standards that otherwise apply under conventional zoning. This is a red flag and seems to not follow along with the spirit of how Plymouth would like to see development happen and adhere to the master plan. Also, how will the project impact our downtown? Plymouth's goal is to continue to have a robust and vibrant downtown. Does this project take away from this or add to it? In short, there seem to be way more questions than answers for the planning board to rush into making the TMOD. Perhaps taking a step back and really thinking about what is needed before a project like this can even begin to be thought about is what is necessary at this time. Respectfully submitted, Judy and Eric DeLeo, Fairgrounds Road.
Thank you, Molly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Molly.
I think this letter is, is very speculative. It, it just goes right off into opinion and speculation. My feeling is that this developer is going to have to come to us with a plan that we can approve, that meets DES and all the requirements. So I, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
So a lot of good points in that letter, stuff that hadn't been discussed by the planning board prior to getting to this third hearing. I'm concerned. And she made a, raised a good point about what the changes that we are proposing to the ag zone are in direct conflict from what we're doing here. And I, you know, as we were reading the minutes, someone said, "The town, we need to, these businesses could face barriers changing the town." Chris says the town could also quickly change if these changes are not made. And here we are, trying to propose this PUD that's definitely going to give all the tools necessary to make major changes to the town, and we're trying to push this through. So it appears that those that were sitting here wanting the changes for the uses on the ag zone, but yet kept quiet on this when they were trying to stop a hotel near them, and I don't know if that's the reason, it was because it was near them, some of the people in attendance. But yet here we're talking about 25% of 250 acres. That's a large planned unit development with a core that could be 25, 50-some-odd acres, 55, 60-acre core, where the height of the buildings could be higher than what the town allows. It could allow for hotels and buildings much bigger than what was proposed that everybody wanted to stop. And here we are, we've got to get this passed so we can get it to the town, and we've been looking at this and have questions every night. And the townspeople, before they vote, will see a small little three to four sentence on whether they vote yes or no. Extremely concerned about this and the fact that now we're talking about a water, a sewer department that's servicing 1,100 residents, and here we are talking about a potential enlargement that would go to that facility that could be in the thousands of buildings. And the cost that the water and sewer residents might have to bear to, for the infrastructure, it wouldn't just be those residents on Tenney Mountain, on 3A, that would be bearing that cost. It would be everybody, even the 1,100 that are already paying through the roof for their services. And the fact that we're then talking, well, maybe they'll come up with their own sewer treatment facility in those sensitive areas and wetlands, or near those sensitive areas and wetlands by Tenney Mountain. and wetlands by Tenney Mountain, which are some of the most precious that we have in the community." Lot of reservations, a lot of issues. I mean, just the town school that we built in 19... Late '80s, early '90s, the new school. And we're talking about 3,000 residents that live here permanently. We have 3,000 college kids. And we're potentially talking about several thousand new people that could be 1,000 or so students added on to their elementary school. That's going to have to be some serious thought into that before too long. Yeah, there's a lot of things that... It's the job of the planning board to say, "Yeah, this makes sense for Plymouth," or "This doesn't." To me, it's pretty clear-cut. And the amount of water that it's going to take to run this, I think the residents that are already there could have water issues going into the future. And I think that water could take away from potential needs for the ski mountain, and the ski mountain may have a very hard time staying a ski mountain. It may just become condos. And this is really scary, what we're playing with here. This is fire, to me.
So, just a couple of points of clarification. One, about our intent with our zoning changes. Both the change to allow for greater development of Tenney Mountain and the changes that we have proposed in the town now, for a petition as proposed, to the ag zone are in our master plan. And they are both changes that are consistent with the vision laid out in our current master plan.
Can I ask, where does it say in our master plan not to have repair facilities in the ag zone? Where does it say not to have...
It mentions maintaining the character of the ag zone through changes to the uses. I don't know the exact language off the top of my head.
Character is very subjective.
It sure is. And we've got a lot of things that are already there that make up Plymouth that is the reason why people moved here, not to have several thousand new residents. This is not what people signed up for.
My other point of clarification, I would say, is we're not actually looking at any applications here. We are looking at a change to zoning which could allow for an application to come in, which we then have to adjudicate based on water and sewer infrastructure, based on off-site impacts potentially, and a lot of other things that might make us say no. And if a business wants to come in and propose something that's going to fail yet again, like we've seen failed attempts to rejuvenate Tenney Mountain, that's their choice to make as a developer to come up with a successful business plan. Not to say that we don't think anyone could ever do that.
And I hear you, John, on the failed attempts in the past. But there is nothing preventing someone from coming in with a solid plan to do Tenney Mountain with the existing zoning that we have now. And should something like this happen, the developers are going to come, "Well, you put this in front of us. You know, we're here, we've just spent all this money." And they're going to push their way through. And it's those deep pockets, it's those deep pockets that will get through. We've got a great mountain, and I am very concerned that this will prevent our little ski area that we have in our community. It will affect the sensitive acres and wetlands that we have there. And there is a way. It's been done on many other mountains to be successful. And I think that Plymouth's Little Tenney Mountain can do it, and it can be a nice little ski area with development that doesn't require hundreds and then thousands of condos all over it. Because that really takes away from Plymouth. And I get it, the developers, they want to make a lot of money, and I get that. They need to make their money. But on the back end, Plymouth might be stuck having to build a new school. The sewer department may have to build a new building that they have already... One of the commissioners from decades serving says, "There's not even the room to take anymore sewer. We can't increase our plant size." The cost that Plymouth might have to bear on this is unbearable. And our little town that we all enjoy and love and walk around downtown and Main Street is going to be lost forever because there's a group of people here that would love to really see more housing in Plymouth, no matter what we have to do. And we don't. I just don't think... There's no one that says we have to do this.
When I speak to the students, across a good part of the world, and New Hampshire is one of the places kind of leading the way in this, we have an aging population.
Aging?
Aging population. We have enrollment in schools shrinking in many cases. And that's not sustainable long-term. And it may be nice to think about lower taxes, short-term. In the long-term, that's going to bite us all when we have no young families here who can support us into the future. And so, the idea that we might have more kids going to our schools, I say, "Yeah, absolutely." And if we don't want to, as an entire state, in fact, like just become meaningless, we need young people. So, yeah, there might be more kids here. And I say, "Absolutely, that's wonderful."
And I don't agree, John. I love the fact, our school, I love young people, obviously, and there's always going to be those waves. And it's never constant. There's always waves. We're going to see another wave soon. But to double, triple our population in the name of seeing condos all over Tenney Mountain Highway is... That's a lot.
Well, it's not Tenney Mountain Highway we're talking about.
Route 3A.
Can I weigh in on a couple of these, too? So, I think this letter raises a lot of questions, more than it provides points. You know, there's a lot of... So, you started by saying this letter makes a lot of good points. And I think it raises a lot of questions. There's a little bit of information in this letter and a lot of inverted pyramids of fear based on small bits of information that could go one way or another. There are good questions here, but I think, as we've talked about, you know, water and sewer, you know, our existing facilities may not meet the need there, but we're not obligated to serve water and sewer to a development there. The developer is required to come up with a plan.
The sewer's already at 3A. I'm sorry.
Thank you. With regard to the schools, there's potential that these could all be year-round homes. But I suspect... So, we've talked about, people have been concerned about condos. My suspicion is that there's going to be some condos. I suspect that the developer is probably going to want to build single-family homes, which is probably not the end of the world. These are going to be vacation rentals. You know, if you look at Waterville Valley, think of that part of town as vacation rentals as we think of Waterville Valley. Waterville Valley's got about 1,500... Sorry, between 1,000 and 1,100 housing units in Waterville Valley. So, that might be the size of the development we might see, up to that size. When COVID happened, the Waterville Valley School went from a total enrollment of 16 to 64, 65. It quadrupled, but it was 65 from a resort ski town, the whole K-8 school. So, if we were to see that kind of enrollment at our elementary school, I don't think it would affect us very much. And I honestly think the increase in tax revenue from those properties would more than offset the increase in burden to the school load.
There's also the fact that they could still just do a housing development with the underlying zoning.
They could. I mean, really...
Without any sort of coming to us with a full-scale vision of the other ways in which the business might become viable.
The other thing about the letter is that it raises a lot of questions that call into the question, like, "Is this the right..." Have we really thought through all of this? And no, it's not for us to think through all of this. We're looking at the 20,000-foot level. Like, if something like this needs to happen, this is a tool that a developer could use. We're not required to answer all the questions that are raised in this letter.
In fact, we'll be asking those questions of the developer.
Of the developer, right. That's for the developer to show us, "Yes, we can make this work by doing this." The point of planning is to have that 20,000-foot view and say, "Can we create an opportunity for somebody to do something different than what's there now that would still be compatible with our town?" And I do think that that number of people is going to put demand on services that are not currently going to be met in town. It's going to create opportunity for more business growth. The likely place to locate them is going to be Tenney Mountain Highway on the way there. That is in the master plan, by the way. The north side of Tenney Mountain Highway is a targeted growth zone. But it's also going to create the need for services near those homes, which is why a dense urban core with mixed uses is part of the PUD. So, if you were to think about, you know, underlying zoning, it's probably going to be hard to put a store, or a restaurant, or a number of restaurants in that area. Whereas, I think the PUD plan with the high-density core on lots that are bigger than 250 acres is a good thing. I think it gives developers flexibility that it's not currently there.
Again, if you want to think about Waterville Valley, like their so-called Town Square area.
Yeah. I mean, think about the Waterville... Yeah, the Town Square, there are five-story buildings, there's an ice rink, there are multiple restaurants, there are bars. That could be the core of a downtown area in that part of town, west of 3A, that still provides that level of service where we don't see a lot of people that... I mean, yeah, I want to see businesses on Main Street survive, too. But, you know, I think we're talking about growth. And I think this is not going to happen in two years. We're not going to see 3,000 houses. This is a 20- to 30-year development plan.
Can I ask you a question?
We might see a PUD plan next year. What I'm saying is, the PUD plan is simply, this is the development plan for the area. It's going to allow developers to say, "All right, these areas are going to be residential. We're going to sell them to this developer. That developer is going to come in with a subdivision plan. We're going to see a proposal for an urban area. We're going to see a developer do that. We're going to see another area be subdivided off, maybe for condos." You know, the PUD plan, the ability to accept a PUD plan just creates... It's like building a new town. Like, building a new town without a plan is just crazy. And they could try to do that with their existing underlying zoning, but I think they're going to struggle.
So, a couple more comments, and I'd like to actually open up to the public.
Neil, I have to have a couple more comments first. I appreciate it, yeah.
Neil?
Well, for one thing, I think we should take a look at the tax rate in Waterville and tax rate in Lincoln. I remember when Lincoln was on its knees, they were poverty-stricken up there. And Sherman Adams developed a plan, and he turned that town around. And he has made that town into a thriving community. My feeling is that we have a developer here... We have never had a developer like this guy. And he's got his finger on the pulse of where things are going and where the opportunities are. And whatever... I don't want to hobble him in his prospects. I think that whatever plan he comes in is going to have to be reasonable in our eyes.
Tax rates in Lincoln and Waterville are $11 and $12, respectively.
Yeah.
Much lower than ours.
Well, my feeling is that this will cut our tax rate.
I think it will.
Potentially, if it happens and all that.
Be careful what you say.
That's a very important issue. That's what I feel. It's a very important issue in this town. We are about one of the highest in the state. What is it? We're maybe the second-highest in the state? Tax rate?
According to the economic development guy who's in the select board meeting on Monday, he said our overall tax impact is third-worst in the state.
Third, okay. That was...
Third.
It also fluctuates year to year based on when different towns revalue and all of that.
I think the table he was using incorporated that current level of valuation.
So, Mike, and then Jason, and then we're going to go to the public.
So, I still go back, and I was just kind of going to throw this out at Phil. We want to take away a lot of the uses and make it much more difficult with roadblocks, with changing the zoning uses in the ag zone, which I mentioned. But here we are, saying in this PUD along 3A, that a developer can put in a 200,000-square-foot manufacturing or warehouse and can do manufacturing. And it just kind of... Again, it's very much against what we were trying to do, and no one spoke out against the PUD. I haven't figured that out. It's a question that I'm kind of asking.
Your assumption assumes that it's a homogeneous space. The point of zoning is to say, "We don't want this kind of development here, but we do want this kind of development here." And that's what we're putting... That's what we are... We're crafting proposals to put in front of the voters based on what we think might work.
That's what planning is, this is why we're all here. Jason?
So, yeah, that's part of the thing I want to bring up. Redefining the ag zone and the Tenney Mountain Overlay District is not congruent with each other because we're trying to say, "We want this type of development here and that type of development there." But the other thing I wanted to talk about is, you know, you talked about, you know, populations comes in waves. You know, I think I'm the newest person here to Plymouth, and I moved here in 2019. I moved here getting a job at Plymouth State University, and I was very fortunate to get a house at an affordable price at that time.
You're lucky.
My house is... According to estimates now, my house has gone up a third in value. And if I wanted to move here now, if I would have, you know, in 2025, I'd be looking at the same job that I accepted in 2019, I would have looked at the housing price and said, "Yeah, I can't move." And so, one way that could possibly help this is opening up areas for development in this town, which is what this overlay district could do. Also, with the fact that, once again, it gives us approval of these plans and saying, "If we don't like this development, we can say no."
All right. I want to open this up to the public. So, it is currently 7:38, and I will open a public hearing. If you have anything you'd like to say, please come up and identify yourself and... What do you want to say?
Nick Mason, High Street. I wasn't going to say anything, but in response to Judy DeLeo's letter, I would take everything that she has to say regarding Plymouth Village Water and Sewer-related stuff seriously. The rest of that seemed a little bit... I mean, you can't simultaneously be worried that it's going to overrun the school with children while also being flooded with Airbnbs and that sort of stuff. It really, most likely, is a mix of hypothetical both threats or whatever. As far as Mike, I mean, it is our local ski area, but it's not our... I mean, it's a place we are lucky that is like a cat and seems to have nine lives, but you cannot expect a ski area to keep coming back. So, if it's something that the community values, and I would hope that the community does value it, because we have 100-plus years of ski history in Plymouth, and I would hope that the community values it enough that we do enough to make whoever, whether it's the current group or some future group who's going to develop it, that we do something that allows them to continue to make it exist. Because a primary lift that's 61 years old is not going to go on forever. And I say this as a person who loves to ski there, but when he gets up and talks about Aspen and Mont Tremblanc, I mean, my eyes glaze over. I'm not interested in that. I park in the parking lot, I boot up, my children are grown, I don't have to use the lodge. I like Tenney, I boot up in the parking lot, I get right on the double chair and go. And it will... Like, massive development would negatively affect the way that I currently use Tenney Mountain. But I realize that the way that I use Tenney Mountain is beneficial to me because it has barely held on for so long. And I think my point is basically just, this is a ski town, and I think as the university, they still have the same footprint, and they still, obviously, are the 400-pound gorilla in town. But in reality, they are in a downward trend in their economic driver aspect for the town of Plymouth. And so, I think we need to diversify, you know, the potential economic drivers for the town. One of them is resort development on the outskirts of town. It's not unreasonable, I don't think, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Woods, Fairgrounds Road. Maybe I can touch a little bit on water and sewer issues, since I'm on the Water and Sewer Board. You touch upon, you've touched upon tonight the key question, which is, you know, does the planning board move ahead and promote something that may or may not even be feasible today? But maybe it will happen sometime in future, you know, in future decades? Or, you know, do you just say, no, we're not going to do this because we're concerned that there's not adequate water and sewer, whatever else? I mean, I can say, speaking specifically to Water and Sewer, please look at the current warrant that we have for this year, which is $32 million in spending. And let me emphasize that none of that has to do with expansion. It is about just catching up with stuff that's really old and making sure it keeps working in the future. So, we're not going to be expanding. Do we have excess capacity now? Yes. Do we have enough capacity to build, to receive all the septicage that the developer suggests would come if it's a full build-out? No. So, it's a limiting factor. And it's going to continue to be. I find it hard to believe that a developer would have the pockets deep enough to build their own wastewater treatment plant. I mean, I would think to expand ours, you know, you're talking about a big number, you know, $50 million is not unreasonable, I don't think. So, that's where we're at. I'm not going to say I'm against or for this. I'm just going to say, let's, I guess I'm a little bit concerned about it opening the doors to the possibility, and then it coming, you know, it's going to put a big burden on you all to, because you're going to have a big development in front of you and a lot of work to do to make sure that, you know, once it comes time for the proposal, is it, is it all-around good? Are we going to do studies, you know, is this going to drag on? That's all.
Appreciate the feedback.
Thank you.
John, can I ask one question of the commissioner?
Oh, yes.
One question, Chris. So, who paid for the expense to get the sewer line all the way to Tenny Mountain? Because right now, this plan or this overlay would not just affect the Tenny Mountain ski area. It's for 15, 1800 acres? Or 2,000 acres?
I think it's like 3,000.
Three, this is 3,000 acres, all on 3A.
Right.
If it was Tenny Mountain that brought the sewer line there and other developers that are not related, obviously, to the ski area want to put their development in, can they just hook up to that or pay for the extra length? How does that all work? Or is it everybody?
It's got to come before the board, and we've got to decide, you know, you know, is the engineering correct? You know, is it, and is it something we, does it follow our guidelines? Is it something we want to take, we can take on? Bear in mind, the existing sewer, which goes out to Tenny Mountain, I believe that was built in the 80s, so it's old.
It was built by Tenny Mountain.
Right. It's old, it's 40-plus years old.
They built and upgraded the plant, too.
There are, there are concerns at the moment. There are issues out there that need to be resolved just to maintain the current state of the sewer. So, there's a lot of work to be done. I mean, that, again, that's, these are, I mean, you should be aware of those, but it's not like this is going to, with appropriate spending, it's not, you know, they may have to build that out. But on the water side of things, water ends at Walmart now. So, move, for send water out there, it's a long distance. Consider that we were spending to replace water lines in the order of $450, $500 a foot. So, you know, it's not cheap.
Can I clarify one point? So, of the 3,000 or 4,000 acres that's in the Tenny Mountain Overlay District, I think there are two or three parcels. I mean, any number of parcels could be reconfigured, but of the existing parcels, there's only a couple that have enough acreage to be able to put in a high-density or the high-density core.
250 acres?
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, otherwise, like, there's no increase in density.
The 100 acres, you.
That's basically just the underlying zoning density. So there's really no, I mean, as originally written, 100 acres wasn't going to allow any, any housing. But I think the change we made last week allows housing. Well, no, it was not going to allow housing. If you, if you read it, the only housing that was going to be allowed, before the change of last week, the only housing that was going to be allowed in a PUD was in the high-density core. And that's what the developer asked us to change last week, or at the last meeting. So when we changed that, yeah, a 100-acre parcel could put in housing, but it's at, it's basically the same as the, it's the same density as the underlying existing zoning. So, this change is not going to make a huge.
Actually, if I can further clarify that. Using the underlying zoning and the extra density of another unit per 1,250 feet, I think it is, you could actually get higher density by not doing the PUD right now than you could doing a PUD.
Yeah. The only difference is the amount of units per building could exceed.
Yes, but the overall density could actually get higher by not doing a PUD.
But that's only in the, in the high-density core. And that's, again, where you have, there are only a couple lots where you can get over 250 acres to be able to have that.
And if there was something that really put that much restraint in the system, and we heard from Plymouth Village Water and Sewer, we could consider, you know, off-site impact fees and all sorts of other stuff that would be necessary to protect the town. And that's really something, in my, in my view, I mean, you facilitate the opportunity, and then you see if they can make it work. And if they can't make it work, they can't make it work.
We do have Tom Hand on Zoom with his hand raised when you guys.
Well, I think, let's get to Dean first, since he's been standing for a little bit.
I'm going to fall down. Anyway, I distinctly remember when that sewer line was built because the, we did a walk-through, and there was a barn put up. And the guy from Florida was trying to run Tenny Mountain at the time, and he went defunct. But that sewer line cost the town of Plymouth nothing because it went through my field down there where there was, where there was a lot of bad, well, it was almost like quicksand down through there. But the guy went defunct. And I, I've been with that, from Sam Hall, John French, all the way up through, and I've watched numerous of them going to stick a big pig, and then they come in and they fall down, and they all, all just, just quit. But anyway, I'm totally against this because we don't need any such mess as this overlay is looking for. It's going to affect me, it's going to affect everybody. Right now, my taxes are running $22, $2300 a month. So, I don't think this is going to help because I don't think these guys are ever going to amount to nothing. Most of them pick up and leave. I sold oil up there for a while, and I finally get out of there with a whole skin. And a lot of them had the habit of changing managers every 30 days. You just get a report going to somebody, and the guy's gone, you know? And I don't believe this guy is going to happen. I'm totally against it, and I, I would hope that you guys vote it. Vote it down, however you do it. All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we had a couple people online, Joseph?
We have Tom Hand on Zoom.
Okay. So if you'd like to speak, please unmute yourself and make your comments.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Tom Hand from Siteform. I was at the hearing a couple weeks ago. Appreciate all the time and effort that you have put into this process. You know, I'm here on behalf of Stephen and Brian from the development team with Tenny. And, you know, I think there's some really good conversation back and forth tonight. And, you know, I think, you know, the feeling that Stephen really is thinking and looking towards the future, not just of Tenny and the mountain, but of Plymouth in general, is a really important point. And, you know, you're right. This, you know, it's the developer's burden to really prove that the plan can work. And, you know, you guys, your role is to allow this framework to be set so that we have something to design against and to put a plan and a project together, you know, following those updated regulations. So, you know, we had a really good working session last time, you know, trying to, you know, make these tweaks to the language, which, you know, we feel as a development team are really beneficial to the project. Because, you know, there is the resort aspect of the project, but there's other related, you know, improvements and developments and economic drivers that Stephen is interested. And trying to move along in this area of Plymouth that, you know, per the town master plan, is identified as a growth zone. So, you know, the framework of the town master plan was set. This zoning language is, you know, in the works. All moving in the direction of really trying to allow for a new vision for Tenny, which hasn't been achieved before because of some of those constraints. You know, in terms of some of the specifics that were mentioned in that letter, which, you know, are really good points, and Joseph, I do hope that we can get kind of a copy of the letter, as well as potentially the legal review that you reviewed earlier. But, you know, Stephen is already in talks with the town regarding water and sewer. You know, there are issues, as you've identified, at the resort, which they're trying to work through and resolve already. And, you know, he's very cognizant of the fact that, you know, there are needs to extend town services up to the mountain to support this type of development. And, you know, he's planning on investing in that. You know, where all the dollars and cents come from ultimately is yet to be determined. But, you know, I think he's, he's really looking to back, you know, those projects and do them in a way that lessens the burden on the town. And then, you know, as far as water goes, you guys are aware that, you know, he's already invested quite a bit in snowmaking so that, you know, through the ups and downs of the season, you know, the resort as a winter recreation destination does continue to work and thrive. That's something that's really not been a high priority, unfortunately, in prior developers. So, you know, he's making that investment right out of the gate with his ownership and as one of the first initial upgrades at the resort. So I think that's a critical point. And, you know, there was the hydrology done, like you mentioned at the last hearing. And, you know, I won't, I won't pretend to know much about it as a landscape architect, but we are working with Horizons Engineering, is doing the more detailed work. And, you know, understanding the hydrology of that site, you know, the existing wells that are on-site, whether those wells continue to be used for potable water for the residents, or if there are additional wells that are drilled, you know, is part of the conversation, as well as the conversation of extending municipal water. So, we're certainly aware of all that. You know, and I think to the point of the ag zoning and the TMOD, you know, there's, there's a little bit of this, you know, tension between the ag zoning, which really covers a lot of Plymouth. And, you know, as this growth and development zone, as identified in the master plan, you know, I think we need to think about this, you know, quote-unquote "ag zone" as something different. And the TMOD is really trying to establish that, that, yeah, that is the area, the part of town associated with the resort, where we would like to envision additional growth, preserving the really critical ag zones, you know, within the heart of town. But, you know, allowing and envisioning that increased development in this, in this portion of town. To that point as well, you know, if we did the underlying zoning, you're right, we could get a lot of density, but it would also be spread out quite a bit more than if, you know, we are allowed to do the higher-density village cores, which are written into these zoning amendments. So, you know, that's a really important tool in a developer's tool belt in order to actually preserve more of the open space and the open lands, be able to increase density beyond the underlying zoning, as well as through height increases. Because, you know, we might say there are, you know, 2,000 or 3,000 acres there, but when you take out, you know, the wetlands and the streams and the steep slopes and the cliff faces, like, that gets, starts to get reduced pretty quickly. So, to not overdo the development on that, you know, buildable portion of land, you know, we really are looking to create that vibrant village with the higher-density, as well as the lower-density residential in the outskirts and, like, say, that 100-acre PUD as well. Just a couple other points. You know, I did talk about the water and the sewer, so, you know, that is already something that we're in talks with. And then, I did have one question regarding the density. So the way the regs are written now, you know, we say basically five units across the total PUD. However, the board should pay special attention to the amount of buildable land contained on the tract. So I just wanted to get clarity. Are we saying that let's take the entire PUD, apply the five-acre density, that becomes the density and the total number of units, but then apply the buildable area to identify where we can apply that density? Is that a correct assumption?
I think that sounds mostly correct. I would add that one of the things we also said was, even within the buildable land, we try to cluster those units as best as possible. Yeah. If anyone else wants to clarify, I know Phil, you did a lot of the lifting on that.
I was just trying to summarize the perceived intent of the board at the time.
That sounds correct.
I'm okay with that.
Okay. That's a great clarification. So we'll proceed with that understanding that it is, you know, the total density on the buildable land, but then even further clustered to continue to preserve open space. You know, and I would just say, as, as kind of, I've been thinking about this development, you know, the toe of the whole mountain, kind of paralleling the Mayhew Turnpike, is where there's a lot of those large tracts of wetlands. You know, we are super sensitive to that. I think it provides a really good existing buffer between, you know, some of the residential development and the Mayhew Turnpike to what will hopefully potentially be the, you know, development of Tenny. So we're absolutely looking to preserve those wetlands to the greatest extent possible. You know, I can't say that we won't have some impacts as we expand road networks and connections. But, you know, we have gotten a lot of updated wetlands mapping from Horizons from, over the course of the summer. So we do all have that current data. And, you know, and that usually lasts for about five years with the state, you know, while it's still good. So it's, you know, prudent for us to kind of plan based on that mapping and that data that we've done to date. So, you know, questions in terms of, you know, impacts to wetlands, you know, we are going to be really sensitive about our developments and where they occur. And, you know, to be honest, the mountain is uphill. So, you know, it's logical that most of that development is going to occur more proximate to where, at least for the resort side of it, where the mountain is. Pretty sure that's about the summary of my comments and the one question I had. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I would assume there are lots of people in this town on the board who would probably be equally and more sensitive to wetlands and any plans we get. Any other public comments? Yes?
Hi, David Nash, Fairgrounds, 30 Fairgrounds Road. Just, I guess the question is, that I'm hearing is, are we trying to stall development of Plymouth? Are we just trying to stall it? Is that, like, it seems like the resistance here is to stall development. If you want to do that, then let's change the zoning to two acres for every house lot or three acres. Otherwise, if your comments are, or, you know, your observation is correct, the density isn't changing, then it seems to me like it's kind of a no-brainer. One or the other. I mean, you're, if the density is still, still able to get that many houses on that land mass, or, you know, that area, then what's changing? If it's a, if it's a, you know, cluster development? I don't know. Maybe I'm not seeing it correctly, or, but.
Yeah, just on a broader perspective, there's promoting development as one of our goals, but also doing it prudently and protecting the town. And I think that is at least some of the tension that we hear here. I, and I think this is a good tool to do that personally. There seems to be some disagreement over that, but, yeah.
Can I answer that, too, John?
You may, Mike.
One thing that the planning board has done, and I think it was unanimous, was to go with a, just recently, within the last year, to go with a open space change to our zoning, which allows for more housing in a smaller area. Rather than just one unit per acre, one home per acre, we allowed for more than that. And I think that's why. And I think that's why John or Phil has said, if they just use our existing zoning, they can get a lot more houses if it's all available to build.
It'll just require more infrastructure to get there, if I'm seeing it right. They'll have to build more roads, curbs.
Well, with the open space...
As opposed to grouping everything.
Right, and that's why we allowed with the open space was to group in small areas and be able to do a higher density than if you just split everything up into one-acre zoning. So we've already allowed for that. We're all, I think, pretty much in agreement that we want to be able to have more affordable housing in Plymouth. More housing, then more options for Plymouth. And I think for some with this small dense area could allow for 30, 40, maybe many more units per building. And that's where you're probably not going to see housing where people are coming for a second home. It might be someone, because there is such a need for inexpensive income, income-based housing. It could be a developer just plops a building in, puts 60, 80 units in one building and says, "I've done my, I've done my PUD here, and I've got the acreage, and I can then do some more housing around it," whatever.
We do have guidance over that process.
Well, with our open space, it was still limited to six units per building, and they could put a lot of units in there. So I think that's the difference, how many units per building.
Yeah. Okay. And by allowing greater density, of course, you do, you reduce the amount of infrastructure build-out, which can keep costs down. And not to mention having a mixed-use kind of core would be kind of nice in many ways.
Right.
Thank...
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Or, all right. Is there anybody else online?
Anybody?
I need to have just one additional comment.
Yep. You know, I, I think as we've discussed here, you know, there's a lot of land that's open and, you know, viable for, for housing development. And, you know, anyone over this course of, you know, five, 10, 20 years prior could have come in and developed housing. You can develop housing under the underlying zoning now, right? At what we're seeing is pretty significant density. You know, that will certainly help with housing costs. However, what it's missing is the economic engine in terms of new jobs, new opportunities to attract people. You know, so really what this, this plan is, is it's both. You know, it's certainly going to be housing. There's going to be higher-end housing specific to the resort. You know, that's, you know, part of what helps pay the capital for the improvements. But, you know, Stephen is also very obligated to providing some opportunities for more affordable housing, you know, that's more town-specific or worker-specific. You know, he's thinking if he hires, you know, general manager or operations teams people, that, you know, they may be able to afford housing within neighborhoods at, at the bottom of the hill. So, you know, in addition, he's, you know, mentioned previously the research and the laboratory space, and how those are really good kind of high-paying tech jobs. You know, that's another driver for, for creating some economic viability in town and, you know, starting to backfill for some other businesses. And, you know, really looking at, you know, there certainly are going to be more restaurants, more, you know, eating establishments, general stores, you know, shops, all sorts of stores that go into those higher-density areas, that are all going to have to have, you know, employees and people servicing them. So, you know, it's really a, a development play that is hand-in-hand between both the, the real estate and the residential, as well as, you know, the economic options around new business growth. You know, I found it interesting, we have similar questions, conversations about this in my town, about the, the benefits of small business. We, you know, I'm a small business owner, you know, I'm sure many of you are, but as, we have a little bit more of a personal view of paying taxes, right, as a small business owners. And it's the larger businesses, you know, that are going to come in and really provide a good, strong footing in terms of that economic growth. So, you know, I think we're, I just wanted to make sure that everyone realizes, like, you know, we do want housing, you know, and, and that opportunity's out there, but it has to also be supported by new business opportunities as well.
All right. Thank you.
Can I read a couple, a couple items from our, oh, if, if they're still public, let's...
I just want to say...
Yeah.
I remember that argument when Walmart came to town. Oh, everybody's taxes are going to get reduced.
We found ways to spend the money, dude.
They, they might be higher still if Walmart wasn't there. Never know. Can I read a couple items from the master plan that are relevant here?
And then there's value per acre downtown.
What's that?
Then there's value per acre downtown. It's actually very high.
Yeah.
Anyway, go ahead.
So, in regard to, I, I pulled up the master plan, I, I don't look at it regularly, but I was able to find a couple things that are relevant to our discussions here tonight.
Okay.
Yeah, so, oh, you were on it. So, yeah, page, on page 44, under the economic development, number seven deals with, one of the goals in the economic development session is encourage four-season recreation development at Tenny Mountain. Revised land use regulations to support commercially viable mixed-use resort-type development, including high-density residential units. Explore opportunities to provide incentives for needed infrastructure improvements. So, this might not have the exploration of opportunities for infrastructure improvements, but there are, there are structures in the existing regulation that allow for that. So, that area could be developed with a TIF district. A TIF district allows a TIF to encumber a, like, a bond, they, that would be basically a, an additional tax assessment on those parcels that they could use. They could put in a, a $50 million bond on all those parcels that would be paid off over 30 years, that would go towards improving water and sewer infrastructure.
And to clarify, we're not considering a TIF district tonight.
No, that, it's, it's a, it's a tool that's available if the developer wanted to go that route and wanted to encumber those properties with a TIF district.
What is a TIF district?
Tax incremental financing district. It's something that, it, it's a tool that can be a subset of a town, or it can be a subset of multiple towns, that can have separate rules than the town rules that, that underlie it.
Okay.
And then, number eight, Mike, you, you had asked earlier about the ag zone change that we, that's not on the table tonight, but number eight does say, ensure that zoning ordinance does not, in general, allow for new business in areas of town not identified for business growth. So I, I think that the proposed zoning change that we've already addressed does affect that, but it's, it's not relevant to this discussion, but you, you did bring that up earlier, and I wanted to at least share that.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you.
Did you have a further comment or question? No? Okay.
I just want to comment.
Come on up.
The folks at home want to hear you, need, Dean.
To the mic.
What's that?
To the mic.
The folks at home want to hear you, too.
You have to bring your mic, too, Dean. Need a movable mic.
I have a wireless mic in here.
You probably do.
Actually, it's, it's good that people come up to podium.
That's true.
I just had one comment about, has anybody checked, I wonder if they have done with the, with the DOT, because I assume they're going to have to have a, if this goes, they're going to have to have another entrance somewhere. And the increase in traffic is going to be phenomenal. I didn't know if anybody had checked.
Well, that would all need to be permitted and go through traffic impact studies if, if necessary, and...
I didn't know if the DOT is going to give them another curb cut down there or the, you know, somewhere else, because they sure as hell ain't going to have enough.
Who knows? That, that would have to be part of the plan, and we'd have to consider traffic impact.
That's, that's a 10,000-foot question, not a 20,000-foot question, but they'd get to it eventually.
Yeah. Okay, well, it's just, I'm thinking of the extra traffic coming down through there, because they own the old Crombie property there, and they would come down across that. I assume they have to, but there's a lot of wetlands out there.
Mm-hmm.
So, all right. And I do agree with most of Judy's letter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dean.
All right.
John, Dan, bring in 19.05, drive.
Dan, do you have a comment?
Yeah, real quick, does the passage of the Tenny Mountain overlay by the, by the residents, does that lend to more state and federal support when the development begins?
I'm not certain directly. It would provide, I mean, having a large master-planned development might allow for the application for certain state and federal funds, I imagine, by having something impressive to show for it, and to, to put an application together. I'm not sure, certain to be any direct connection there.
I, I do recall, two weeks ago, the, the developer mentioned that the approval of a PUD plan would be a step towards them securing additional private financing as well.
Mm-hmm. It did mention that, yeah.
Thank you. It just, it just makes sense to me that if Plymouth is on the map in New Hampshire as being one of the towns that's looking for affordable housing, and doing what they can, such as the Tenny Mountain overlay, it would be attractive to the federal and state agencies that are in the same bind as, you know, our surrounding states. Affordable housing is not germane to Plymouth or to New Hampshire. It's the entire East Coast. And it just seems to me that anything that we can do to attract that attention would be a favorable thing to do.
I, I had a similar thought earlier today when I was talking with someone, you know, if, if, if our state is short, you know, 30,000 housing units or something like that, you know, let's say our region needs 3,000, like, if this could be 1,500 housing units in Plymouth, would you rather see 1,500 housing units in, in the region around us everywhere distributed, or would you rather see a little bit of density and more open space around the area? Like, if we're looking at adding, you know, let's say you have to put 3,000 housing units in the towns that abut Plymouth, like, I, I would actually rather, e- even if it's a, a local impact to us in Plymouth, like, we've got the infrastructure, I'd rather see some herb, some rural areas, undeveloped areas, even if it's in the towns abutting us, like, we still recreate in those other towns. You know, I, I don't see it as all bad to have some concentration, like, we, we've all talked about urban sprawl in the past, and the way you get urban sprawl is uniform lot-sized development, and it just goes everywhere. If you want to avoid sprawl, you provide opportunities for density. And I think this, this PUD plan does that.
Mm-hmm. Thanks, Phil.
Thanks, Dan. I appreciate your comment.
All right. Anyone else? All right. With that, I will close the public hearing, and I'll bring this back to the board, and do we have any further comments or questions?
Well, I, I just have one thing I'd like to say, that I, I think it's really important that we try to protect our prime agricultural land from development. And this is one way that we could address our needed residential development in a way that would avoid taking prime agricultural land.
Right. Thank you.
I agree. What I said earlier, I, I will kind of restate again, you know, I, I think what we have here is a workable solution, and I think that I would feel comfortable putting this forth to voters as something that could easily be incorporated into the zoning ordinance if it got enough support from the voters. I, I think it's a good idea, I think it would work, and I will make a motion that we put this forth to voters.
Second.
As, as discussed tonight.
Okay. With the slight administrative changes?
Yes, the, the small administrative changes that did not constitute a significant change.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to put this forward to the voters. Are there any further comments? All right, in that case, all in favor?
Aye.
That was Neil...
Let's do a show of hands, just to confirm.
Aye.
Aye. Are you in, Michael, or? No, okay. Three, three ayes.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
All right. Ayes have it. All right, so this does not go forward, then? All right, well, thank you all very much for the discussion, and all your input, and, yeah, so we'll, um, move forward with, I lost count of exactly how many of the zoning amendments, but a, a good number of interesting zoning amendments going forward this year. And I do want to talk a little bit later this evening, before we leave, about potential community engagement for those.
Sure.
And, yeah, we'll talk about that a little bit later, though. Right now, let me find my agenda again.
All right. I would like to congratulate the sport on getting through the zoning amendment season. We're done with this, thank you.
Is that our last one?
This is it.
This is the last night we can have any.
Except for potential, like, public engagement to actually explain the zoning amendments, but, yeah. It never really is.
When do we start ramping it up again, Terry?
All right. Yes, thank you all. Next up is informational and pre-application reviews. We have David Nash, 30 Fairgrounds Road, potential retail conversion of a garage. And as an informational review, not, not pre-application, we also have the National Guard property as well. So to begin with the David Nash, so let's remind everybody, this is a non-binding conceptual consultation, and we get to hear a plan, and however far along it may be, and give input, ask questions in a non-binding context.
So the site plan review application is just conceptual?
Just conceptual.
It's just conceptual, yes.
Very conceptual.
Let's hear it.
Like, I don't even know if I want to go forward with this now, after that discussion.
Get out while you can.
So, my wife and I are, we purchased the Livermore School about a little over a year ago, a year and a half ago, with the big blue garage on the end of it. But regardless, the existing garage that is there, that was on the property, it's like a 50-foot-long one-car garage, and we're just exploring the idea of having some kind of retail space there. Farm stand, packaged foods, coffee, you know, availability, whatever, we get a lot of traffic. My wife and I are motorcycle riders, and there's a boatload of motorcycles that like to travel Fairgrounds Road and go all the way down to Buffalo Road and, you know, cruise through, and so, just looking at, see what the possibility would be to turn that garage space into a retail space.
Say motorcycles and cyclists.
Not anymore.
No, I mean, it's just on that road there.
Me personally, not anymore cyclists, but yes, there's lots of places, lots of bicycles that go, cyclists that go down that road for sure. Yeah. Towards traffic, you know, whatever, and just locals, you know.
So you're imagining, like, no necessary expansion of the garage or anything, but more of just a change of use to allow for some small-scale retail?
Right. Yeah. You know, um...
First thought that comes to mind is that if the, what, the amendments go through that are putting forward a town vote, you'll be required to go in front of the zoning board to get granted a special exception.
Right. Yeah.
This type of business.
The current use is...
Is garage space, storage.
Okay. Because it's the, it's residential, but it's just, it's the old Livermore School, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm more curious, was it ever put, made into a house? You don't have to answer that question, I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, we lived there, now.
Oh, you lived there? Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, we spent a year renovating it.
Okay.
And are now living there.
Okay. So is it...
Yeah, I was trying to pull up the text.
What's the, if it's a residential, if its primary use is residential?
Mm-hmm.
And so there's just a secondary use of retail space, do we have to do site plan review?
Yes, I believe, I mean...
Because people have home businesses.
You can have a home business and, like, cottage industry sort of stuff.
Yeah.
However, if you're going to be serving customers who will be coming in and out
Okay.
On a regular basis, I think that would be subject to site plan review for a change of use. And if these changes go through, it would be subject, I believe, to a special exception under the zoning board. And I think this sort of business, that, I think it's the exact sort of thing we were thinking about, that would probably be, would probably seem reasonable. I mean, this is all conceptual, non-binding.
Yeah.
We have no idea who would be...
I can't imagine it would, it would be...
In my own personal opinion, what you're describing seems reasonable, but I can't speak for the zoning board, obviously.
Yeah, sure.
So, I mean, you mentioned farm stand, so where would you be getting your... So, I mean, you mentioned farm stand, so where would you be getting your material from?
Up in the air at the moment, you know. I mean, could, local, local gardeners, perhaps?
Two lots down.
Low LFP.
Where the, isn't there a new creation of just two lots down from where they?
Because Local Foods Plymouth.
Yeah.
Which is a once-a-week sort of pickup, pickup sort of thing, as opposed to a regular shop.
Yeah. You have to order online and then pick up on a Thursday for local foods.
Okay.
And, and they, they service, you know, a broad range of vendors, you know, across the, the region, who bring, you know, they get their orders, and then they bring their, their orders to Local Foods Plymouth, who then distributes them. People could drive up and get their, their package of orders.
It's more solely just a distribution.
Yeah, it's not a brick-and-roll retail.
But I'm looking, we're, we're considering, you know, like, a, a regular retail space where people can stop and get a cup of coffee, or, you know, we can have some local foods from, you know, local vendors who have stuff, apples in the, in the fall, whatever.
I mean, one interesting thing, I'm just kind of mulling over in my head. So on, on the one hand, you have Longview, you have Brock's, you have some dairy right down the street, and, and, and some other businesses, which, from one point of view, might, might seem like competition or saturation, but from another point of view, it creates a critical mass of businesses that could also build on one another, and, like, be a place to go to get this sort of stuff, and become a destination. So, I'm, yeah, I'm, in my own brain, I'm just kind of weighing, like, competition versus building critical mass. And I don't have anything further to say about that, except it's an interesting question, I think, to think about.
And I agree, I mean, I agree that, you know, if, what you're talking about seems like a use that would be in harmony with the characteristics of the neighborhood.
Right.
But, you know, the fact that you, you know, if, if the proposed zoning change goes through, you, you know, simply going to the ZBA for a special exception, I suspect, you know, they'll, they'll probably agree, but it's up to them to decide that.
Okay.
And, and it gives, the special exception process gives your neighbors an opportunity to understand what you're proposing, and if they would have objections or be concerned, or ask you to maybe put some hours of operation on or something like that.
Potential concern about added traffic, or whatever it may be.
But nobody sees any glaring, you know?
No.
No.
Problems with opening it up a little retail stand.
And I think this is a great example, in some ways, of the type of business that we would like to protect within the ag zone. And not have, however, you know, a dollar store or a Walmart opening up next to you, you know. And I think hopefully that process can work well to promote this sort of business, and not some of those other businesses that, you know, a lot of residents have concerns about, being on water and sewer and all, right, right over there.
Would want, would we have to have bathroom facilities for a retail shop like that?
That's probably, that's probably a Department of Health thing, if you're serving.
If you're serving food.
You're serving food, I think you do.
Well, I'm not, we're not going to make food there. I mean, I'm talking about, like, you know, local cookies, or oatmeal cookies, or something like that.
I don't know that I can answer that.
I don't know either.
Okay. You know if anybody had that insight.
I think if they're sitting down and served, does that sound ring a bell to anybody?
I don't know. They've got some tricky rules when it comes to food, but...
Yeah, we don't plan on having any kind of tables, maybe, you know, some picnic tables outside or something, but...
It's more about retail than restaurant.
Sure. Yeah, yeah, I'm not looking to go into the restaurant business.
With a restaurant, then yes, you need a bathroom.
I mean, you, you could always, you know, it, it sounds like it's beyond, you know, home occupations are allowed by right. So, I mean, i- if you can comply with that, that's great. But if, if you think it's, if there are retail visitors, I don't think that fits in with, with the, how home occupation is defined.
I mean, I think sometimes home occupation, if it's very small numbers of retail visitors, can kind of squeak through.
Yeah.
But if you actually want to have, you know, people coming in and out on a regular basis.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, nothing really sticks out.
I think it'll be good.
Okay. Thanks.
It's a charismatic building.
Do we have any, like, advice before, or do you have any questions about, like, things to consider in submitting an application while, while we're all here?
I don't think so. I've spoken to Joseph about it a little bit, and, you know, I think what's in the rules and regs in the application are...
Okay.
That's a, is that a state road?
And, and...
It is.
So I would just contact them just to see if there's anything that...
Oh, yeah.
Might be any different.
You already, you already have a permit to enter and...
Right, right. We actually had to get a, an additional permit with the garage and, the new garage, the attached garage.
So, number C under home occupations is the home shall not, the, the use shall not include tea rooms, snack bars, restaurants, or similar establishments. So, home occupation sounds like it's out regardless, but, yeah.
I don't know, he's not really offering tea rooms, snack bars.
I, I was assuming the coffee and snacks kind of thing would be a...
Yeah, coffee would be like, you know, get something from Meddys down here or something, I don't know. But, you know, just have the push, push things in a creamer and...
It may depend if you're actually ingesting it there.
Apple cider in the fall, and whatever.
It would be interesting to consider whether that would count or not, as it, it could be borderline, but I think it goes towards retail, but, yeah.
Looks like he's got enough room to have a big garden. Probably grow, grow, you know, farm produce and sell it.
I can get some, I can get some venison back there. They come walking through the yard.
And I guess you probably already spoke to Joseph, because we have a change on our books already. Even if you apply today before it goes through, it's already, like, you have to think about that, yeah.
Yeah, sure. We have, we have to act as if the zoning ordinance hasn't been accept, approved until it's not.
Yeah, exactly. Thanks for the rephrasing.
Yeah, and I imagine, you know, this is going to be a multi, a several-month process. I mean, even if I were to, like, really get going today, by the time I get all my ducks in a row, it's going to have to go through several meetings, and I'll be March or April before anything comes to fruition of it.
And I will say, we're not obligated to have a public hearing or anything, but if anybody who wants to speak at all?
Yeah.
Oh.
Good luck, Dave.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So, yeah, we look forward to seeing you, hopefully, again. Alright, so I believe we have a informational review of a new facility. If you'd like to come up and introduce yourselves, and, and say if you have any images, looks like you do.
Good evening, board members and general audience.
And before you, I was going to say, and before you begin, so this, this would be a government use of land, and not subject to site plan review.
Correct.
And so, thank you for coming in and sharing this.
Thanks for getting that out of the way upfront.
And if anybody wants, if anybody wants to see this, please feel free to come around to our side of the table. We're not, it's up to you.
So, good evening. I'm Chief Ben Stevens. I'm the Design and Construction Branch Chief for the New Hampshire Army National Guard. So this is my project, and it's been my baby for a couple of months now. And I brought with me some subject matter experts. These are the guys that are actually going to be able to answer your very detailed questions if you have them. This is Owen Smith. He's our prime architect on the project we've contracted with. This is Eric Deremis. He's a subconsultant for Site Civil for us, for this project. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Owen. He can walk you guys through a brief kind of overview, like you, you were using earlier, the 20,000, 5,000 look, and then we can get into some detailed questions afterwards, if you guys have any.
Thank you.
Hi. So, I'm sure you're all familiar with the site on Armory Road off of Main Street there. The, so, the building is a readiness center, and a pretty tight site for the size of building. We're, we're working to design. So our site strategy was immediately to pull the building in to that southern slope that meets the PSU parking lot. So the building will be a two-story building, and the first floor, first floor accessible to the north. And the, the main parking area is located there, and then the second floor is a walkout accessible to the upper level, more or less at grade with that PSU parking lot, with some, some variation there.
Can, can you give us a rough idea of where the existing building is on that parcel?
Yeah, absolutely.
Exactly.
Just put your hand over it.
Yeah, sure. I suspect the, the drawing, this is roughly the footprint of the existing man building.
Thank you.
And can you point to north?
Yep. North is at the top of the...
It is, okay, it's just...
Exactly, south to the bottom.
Just making sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, Main Street here.
Okay.
I'm going to hand it over to Eric to talk a little bit more about the specifics of the site and being the civil engineer, but just to point out that the, the main curb cut is maintained, although it's been widened for truck access and just better use. But Eric can take it away for a little bit more about the site.
If I may, just one second, speaking of location, before we leave that?
Yeah, yeah.
So are you planning, and is it possible to maintain your existing facility during construction, or?
It's, it's really, that comes down first. So it's a full demolition of, of that facility.
Got it, okay. Just curious.
I have a question, Joe.
Sure.
I don't know why I thought originally the plan was your new site out on 3A. So is this going to be a new armory on the existing site?
It's not an armory, yeah. It's, so, armory is a phased-out term. We've moved more now towards concrete. The center's the same thing, right? It's where our local soldiers in the guard go to congregate on week in a month, two weeks a year.
So that's what this site is going to be used for?
Correct. This existing armory building is going to get demoed, and we're going to put back, and it'll be ready to center it, trend work, that's all.
What about the 3A site?
So 3A site, I'm not totally prepared to talk about that tonight, so I would say if you have questions, other one I can answer for you now, compile them, get them over to your town manager. He and I have been in touch, and I can get you, get you, get you answers, or at least get you in front of the person that can answer those questions for you about that site. But I will tell you, as of right now, there are no plans to develop that site as far as I'm aware. But I'm not super high up either.
So, continue on, and we'll let, we'll let you go for a little while, and before we have any more questions.
Eric, if you could, just walk us through the site, and we'll kind of do a little more parking. Got it. Yep, so Eric Deremis with Time Bond, civil engineer. So I'll, I'll give you the, the big overview of the site, drainage, utilities, and feel free to interrupt me if you have any questions. So, as Owen said, we have the existing entrance on Main Street here. We're essentially matching the same curb cut location on the south. We're pushing it north slightly to allow for tractor-trailer access into the site. The tractor-trailer comes through. When you make this turn going back north on Main Street, we're adding this raised, grooved concrete apron here. So grooved to deter pedestrian vehicles, smaller vehicles from going over, but allow for those larger trucks to enter next to the site. We also have the entrance on Armory, Armory Road here. That's for most of the utilities, existing utilities enter the site and will be maintained as well for future addition. As I said earlier, maintain for WB67 access of that larger tractor trailer. The guard has some larger vehicles that we're expecting on-site as well. Lighting is not currently shown in this plan, right? We're still in our planning phase, but we will be developing a photometrics plan, make sure that all the fixtures are dark sky compliant and protected lights, there's no offsite trespass of lighting. That all will come as this plan is developed. We have a gravel fenced-in parking area on this side here for vehicle storage, I believe. These highlighted blue areas are our stormwater rain gardens, stormwater treatment currently. So we have, if you picture the existing building right here in the middle, pretty much all the water in the existing site just sheets off, right? There are a few basins here, some dry wells that capture the roof from off from the existing building and put shit that into the ground. Generally, there's no stormwater treatment on the existing site. So what we're proposing is a great improvement to the stormwater quality that will be exiting the site. We have a series of rain gardens, one, two, these kind of act as one rain garden, that are hydrologically stepped through the middle, another rain garden here. Our goal is to get as much water to this point as possible, right? So this rain garden here will discharge, there's some existing wetlands down here that eventually discharges to the river, I think it's Baker River, then the Penny. So we want to limit the impacts to our neighboring properties as much as possible by getting that water to an area that already currently is well-suited to handle stormwater flows. So our basins will be designed for detention, detention, treatment, and all that. The project will require a NHGDS alteration of trade permit, so we'll be going through that whole process. The site lands in a few protection areas, so it's a wellhead protection area. There is a designated river buffer that we fall within, and others that will go forward with the local advisory committees. There's some stormwater treatment, specific requirements for those districts, and that'll all be handled through our AOTs and everything that we do process. Those are buildings, so utilities, like I said earlier, water sewer enters the site. There's a current eight-inch sewer main that kind of runs through the site this way and out and around the property. We will be requiring to reroute that around our building here. But that will be essentially maintained, same eight-inch through the site that we're tapping into. The water will tap into a T here and run our water onto the site there. There's a utility pole right at this corner, but we'll do underground electric and telecom, but essentially matching the current layout configuration for the water sewer electric. But size for the appropriations.
To add some context to what Eric just went through, as far as those utilities go, our operational needs and kind of footprint on that site, though the building is growing in size, just due to what we currently, our current roles and responsibilities are versus what they used to be when we were calling these buildings armories in the, you know, Cold War era, though those are bigger, the actual manpower footprint has not changed. It's the same size unit that's there currently, and that will be there. So we, we expect no increase or influx in burden on your guys' sewer and water system, which is certainly a concern that you guys are responsible with.
Yeah, we did do a hydro flow test, coordinated with the water and sewer, just to confirm the available capacity on-site, meets the expected demands for the building.
I, I was just kind of thinking about the overall layout. I don't imagine this will have much of an impact. I don't know if you've talked at all about the, we're, we're applying for like a 10-year plan to upgrade that road, and put a sidewalk in, and flatten out that grade over the hill a little bit there. And it looks like that shouldn't impact what you're doing here very much.
No, yeah, we're, we're adding the existing grades to the road here. It is, I mean, you can see the contours, it's a steep road, we're running 8% on the slope here. So that's another reason why we're trying to maintain that location, as well as the sight lines around this turn. But, yeah, why did, putting a sidewalk in there, I don't see any impacts, you know, property line really starts here and all, and we'll be inside that, so there's a pretty decent offer here for any future improvements.
I don't think we have any jurisdiction over you.
We do, we, you may not, but we really honestly do strive to be good neighbors, right? We are, we are part of your community, whether you like it or whether we like it or not. But we value that, right? And, and I will say, if you want, you know, afterwards, after we leave, take a look at these designs, and I can tell you, our current tag, our head honcho, is super supportive of the idea that these buildings should not just be for the New Hampshire Army National Guard, right? These are community use, or they have the ability to become community use spaces as well. So if you had a desire, PSU had a desire, your local Boy Scouts had a desire, to have, you know, a 60-person IT hooked-up classroom, or a big display screen, or a basketball court, or a kitchen where they can host 300-person event, like, this facility can provide you that. I mean, there's obviously the legal aspect, the renting, you know, things that have to be ironed out with that. But physically, this building is available in that aspect, right? On, you know, the, what we call in the tag.
Would it be?
Tags ideas that it would be here and available for you to use if we don't need it.
Would it be available for elections? Is that, do other facilities get used for that, or is that a no-go?
Cannot use this federal facility for election.
That's what I was wondering about.
So anything but that, right?
That's, that's...
One thing you want, Bill, come on.
So right now, our, our school shuts down on Election Day because there's so much traffic there. So like, you know, as a former school board member, I always wonder, like, is there a better place in town to have elections, so we don't have to cancel school?
It would be perfect.
It'd be a good holiday, anyway.
Right.
It's not, though.
Yeah.
I have a, I have kind of a slightly off, off, off-left-field question. The Asquamshamaki Memorial, is that in the right-of-way, or is that on your land?
The what?
The Asquamshamaki Memorial? The plaque with the Asquamshamaki...
Is that how you pronounce it?
It'd be an Indian village.
Well, it's on the southern.
Is that in the right-of-way? Is that in the right-of-way?
So there, we are aware that there's an archaeological kind of heritage... Oh, so there, we are aware that there's an archaeological kind of heritage, um, plaque. I was saying site, I don't know if there's a plaque, we have our own plaque for a fallen soldier on that site.
There's a D A R plaque right there on, on a rock.
Is that where the battle, where they got?
Well, that's where the village was.
It's where the village was.
Yeah.
So these reviews have been put forth to the state historical preservation office so far.
Okay.
They're aware of our plans, they're aware of our drawings, um, if they deem that the sites, um, that we are operating near or even within in some scenarios um, are of value, they often make stipulations, like, hey, you just need to have an archaeologist or archaeologist there while you're digging. Things stop if you find artifacts and we have done that, as far as I'm aware, at least on two other projects in the last four years, I believe.
I think a lot of the artifacts are a little bit further north than the actual marker, but I'm not, I'm not an archaeologist, so.
And I believe the plaque is just a, a hair north of this property, actually, it's.
Okay.
Kind of on the right of way side of the, uh, property that's leased to Plymouth State University.
Sorry, I know, I know it's not like crucial to this project.
Right on the edge.
I wish I had a better, I just can't recall that box there on that property. Go ahead.
You're good, Mike, go ahead. Would, would this facility be able? I have a question, would this facility be able to accommodate, uh, people in, in a, uh, in a, in a crisis?
Exactly.
A shelter.
In a time of need, this could be a shelter, a refuge, a warming shelter. Uh, if you remember back, uh, during pandemic, a couple of greensuitsers came up and I think took over the fieldhouse at PSU. Uh, that was, one of them was my predecessor, I got trained up to fill his shoes, so in that same scenario, you'd see me again and I'd be turning this facility into a crisis center for this community.
Yeah, that's where we did vaccines and.
Your COVID vaccines.
So, Mike and Phil?
So yeah, I've been in the facility a few times with, with the scouts and thank you very much, appreciate, much appreciated. It's a great facility where it was and I'm excited that, um, one other issue is our local school system is at the bottom of the hill, um, something Ward Hill Bridge Road, and there's only a couple options from another access that doesn't dump, dump out into a neighborhood or doesn't go straight up a hill is where there's tons of traffic for the kids to get dropped off and if you've ever been through that intersection at, uh, eight thirty in the morning or two thirty to three fifteen. That access is one of the few that the town has without going over a river that could get right to the back of the school. And just lay, throwing it out there, um, that's, that's kind of a pivotable spot where Route Three could access the back of the school for school buses potentially. Just throwing it out there.
But that, wouldn't that be on the property to the north that's, uh, the Alex Ray property?
I think it could go there, hug around.
Yeah.
There's a significant turbo change between our lot and Alex Ray.
Pretty, pretty large drop off, right?
And it would, you're kind of higher.
We are, yeah.
So higher is better to hug.
Yeah.
Okay. Rather than starting at a low point.
I can't, I can't speak to it, I don't honestly know, but if it's something that you, or even the town, this is a lot of value, I would say. Uh, put together, I mean, we call them white papers, but give me the, give me the basic facts on it, um, and like I indicated earlier, like Joseph and Scott Weeden have my point of contact. So you can compile some of those comments or requests or like, hey, would this even be possible?
I'll send an email to Scott.
We can evaluate it and if some we can work in, um, the idea and the desire to work with the town is there, right? In our organization, like, if we can help, we will.
And of course, this is not a town project at this point.
Right.
I've got a question for the architect.
Sure, sure.
I've been to the, uh, the training facility in Pembroke and I, and I, I think there are plaques on the wall, I think it's a lead gold certified building, are you guys planning to use a similar?
Uh, yeah, we are.
Are you aiming to similar?
We're aiming towards lead, lead silver, um, but a, a, a big tenant at our office is sustainability, um, both in the, uh, the traditional sense of solar panels on the roof and, and potential geothermal system for heating and cooling. Uh, but also in, in that we, we seek to make hundred year buildings, um, institutional buildings that are, that are, are worthy of the guard and also worthy of the town of Plymouth. Um, right now, we're, we're aiming for, uh, a masonry exterior, brick, copper roofs, um, and, and, uh, triple glazed, um, glazing. So I, I, it, the, the, the buildings we, we seek to ma- make are certainly sustainable in, in all the senses that we, we, we can design for.
I'm always impressed that you guys have the ability that you have, have both the forethought and the resources to be able to build to that standard. I, I wish, I wish, I wish our town, like, we're looking at designing a, a town emergency services building in case of fire and I, I, I hope they can use the same standards, but I'm not sure that they'll have the fortitude to push through it.
It's a lot of it is, is definitely, there's budget involved, but it's a lot of is education and, and just knowing, knowing the right systems.
You guys have access to deep pockets.
They got, they got, set up.
We don't get them.
It's our pockets.
I know.
Yeah, exactly.
I know whose pockets it is, but they're deep.
If, if, if you ever are interested, don't get filled.
Right.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So two, two levels.
Two levels, that's right.
And it's only one level now.
Correct. Yeah, just to, just to quickly walk you through it, um, first floor at the top here, so again, that, that north entrance, uh, the main entrance from the parking lot is in the center of the building, central lobby with a staircase going up, a big open space that you can see of the skylight up, up, up above. Um, to the west of the site is an assembly hall, so that's the, the big space that might, uh, accommodate three hundred people for these events. Um, so really, this side of the building, west side of the building is, is really the, the public facing side on the first floor. The east core is really for guard use, office administration. Um, and then the story above is, uh, flexes for both, uh, there's classroom space, there's admin space, there's space that I think could, could accommodate town use and PSU use as, as you, um, uh, work out. Um, and, and again, we, we've made an effort to make a welcoming, uh, entrance at that south side as well, so. And then in terms of elevation, just two, uh, opposing sheds.
You're moving this one into the middle.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
This is that main, uh, eastern bar here and the roof pitches back facing south and that'll accommodate a, a significant number, amount of solar. Um, we'll, we'll see how much we get in the project in this phase, but eventually that certainly could be built out. Um, to potentially accommodate all of the interviews for the building, um, down the road. And like we, like I was saying before, um, lots of natural light, these spaces we're, we're trying to create are, are gonna be, um, big, open, beautiful spaces. The building is gonna be brick, it'll hopefully fit right into PSU Plymouth, the, the, the fabric you already have established here. Um, so any, if, any other questions you have, I mean, uh?
A few other little points to what Owen was saying, it's probably, he, he hated me when we first started because I told him your windows need to be smaller because we are only allowed to have so much. I know, because we need protection, right, walls, that kind of thing. It's all electric, this building is a hundred percent electric, it's zero petroleum fuel, this building, that's why the solar panel already is. Having what, uh, the federal government dictates is you have to be able to be self-sustaining on site for X amount of days, which helps lend towards that pandemic, you know, mask out situation. So Owen took on the challenge, he was able to get that design done for us and that's kind of what we're seeing here.
And the solar you anticipate being all on the roof, not on the ground?
Yeah, it'll be, there's a, there's a fair amount of, uh, roof availability and, and again, the south facing makes it ideally suited for it. So there's a, there's a plenty of space up there for it, whether it happens all at once, there'll certainly be some to start and then we'll see. Yeah, and then in terms of the, the mechanical system, I think we're, we're gonna end up with a geothermal heating and cooling system so that the wells will be, uh, all contained within the site, um, under the paving, so that's, that's a tried and true, we, we've done that for a number of institutions.
I think the Plymouth State Ice Rink has a couple hundred wells that are for geothermal for their, for their facility.
Yeah, that's just becoming, uh, that whole technology is becoming better and better and more available and also there's, um, yeah, there's a lot of, uh, fu- funding available for it right now.
Yeah, generators with fuel stored on site?
Yeah, we do have a backup generator that gets the whole building.
Okay, good.
It is exercised on, on a schedule, sometimes weekly, so like monthly based on use, but yeah, there would be.
I didn't want to have to bring my ten thousand watt over to help you guys.
We're in help without a generator, you can.
Are you guys, are you guys considering, yet, uh, considering battery storage instead of generation on site?
Not for this one, we are.
Other, other places.
Exploring the idea, uh, and trying to figure out how to weave it into the fabric of.
Yeah.
Federal funding, D O D defense type style buildings, you know, there's a lot to go with it, but.
It's a little, it's, it's still out there, it's out there, yeah.
Yeah, we were, um, following clients, everything, all the products in the building are, have to be built, uh, built in America for the most part, so. Some of those systems are, are still working on site.
Actually, I can find US made ones. I'm, I'm curious, so during the pandemic, were the vaccines there, of course, and the cars had to be kind of routed around and, um, find a path through the site? And have you thought about that? I imagine you probably have in kind of designing the site, how they're gonna, what the flow of traffic would be in the case you have cars lined up again to go through the site?
So I've asked Eric to, because of this small site size constraint we have, we're struggling to meet the minimum requirements we need just to have parking for our soldier buildings and maintain the ability to actually get that fifty-four, like, tractor trailer through there. So Eric puts together some really clever ideas, um, we have striped some areas that are actually probably concrete, we have drag open curbs. Will allow us for that, you know, to get that large truck in there, um, but it wouldn't require moving some parked vehicles to do that anyway. So to circulate a lot of cars through that site is probably, it's not gonna be easy, but that's kind of what we do, we figure it out.
Yeah.
They come to you and be like, hey, we need to, we need to roll a little bit.
Yeah, the general expected circulation would be a clockwise pattern through the site, that's how we picture the delivery vehicles and any larger structure, or vehicles coming through. We're, we're really constricted with this deep hill right here, uh, we're really trying not to impact that, there's a small little area where it jumps out, we're, we're chopping off a little bit, but we're, we're pretty much matching the existing limits of the paving here and, and working down to the building right on the thirty foot building. Or thirty or fifty foot offset for the building, so we're, we've maximized the space as much as we can. Uh, trying to maintain some green space as well, just balance, balancing it all, all right, between green space, parking, circulation.
We have force protection measures that you're only allowed to move so close to the building, which is why I'm not just so close to the property line. And Eric was able to get it all rearranged so we can get the parking we need, so.
You, you guys are being awfully nice when you could have walked in and said, here's what we're doing, like it or leave it.
You're here, that's a big thing.
The idea in that, that we are here for the community, because we are also the community member, like, I mean, that's really embracing the organization. I don't know how much escort you guys have in that regard, but, um, it's just through and through.
That's the point.
This, yeah, it's our facility, but if there's a way that you guys can do it.
I mean, I, 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 I will say that, um, in the, in, in the future, if we have more than a day notice, we can get the word out, uh, on our agenda, so the public actually knows.
Yeah, so with that being said, um, if there's a request or you hear a comment that, um, this should have been more thoughtful, if you do, please let me know. We will find a way to get back up here and do this again.
Okay, I mean, probably not, but you know.
If there are others out there that want to know about it, let me know and we'll make it happen.
But it's nice to get on the agenda, this, so like, people.
Yes, it is.
I have a question about geothermal. How far down do you have to drill?
It really depends, uh, but typical well might be four hundred feet.
So you don't have to go through ledge, you don't have to go through ledge?
Uh, not necessarily, no.
They weld, uh.
Yeah, it's more of a temperature thing than it is, you know, volume or water, how vast you can exchange that.
There is some ledge there.
Yeah, most, uh, this, this one will be a closed loop system, so it's not relying on groundwater, it's just, uh, ground temperature.
Very cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for giving us the time to present this, you know, I'll leave, we appreciate it.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
Likewise.
Can I ask you one more question?
No.
When's the building gonna start?
Tentatively twenty, twenty-six, we're thinking.
Oh, wow.
So the takedown will start twenty-five?
Um, no, sorry, construction included.
So including, okay.
It's a little dependent on, uh, the funding CRs with.
Cool, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Other business, um, for members of the board and planning staff. Um, A there is HOP round two grant, so we got HOP, um, funding for round two, and you might have remembered that discussion, hopefully. Um, Housing Academy is, again, opening up, uh, for registration, or it is open for registration as of like, a few days ago.
You said the, the funding came through.
Twenty-five thousand, which is partial, part of what we asked for. Apparently, very few communities got everything they asked for and they just kind of spread it thin to a whole. It's my understanding.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
How much was it?
Twenty-five thousand, I think.
First time we did it.
Twenty-five thousand?
That's correct, yep, twenty-five thousand.
And it's for the master, housing master plan chapter, um, we did not get the full kind of overarching rewrite of the zoning ordinance, which we also asked for.
And part of that grant program is the Housing Academy, which is an opportunity, each grantee receives three, uh, sort of slots for members of the typically planning board, or last time it was housing, a, a few housing committee members and planning board members attended. Uh, there is a small stipend for the community's officially designated attendees, uh, to help cover travel costs and the like. Uh, but the first session is January twenty-ninth, the second is February twelfth, then there's one on February twenty-sixth and March twelve. Um, and I don't know, I mean, there are a few folks here were able to attend the last one.
Is, is this a series where you go to all four or is it where you go to one up to the four?
It is all four, yeah, and the community has up to three representatives that it can choose to send.
Joseph, if we went to it last year, is it basically the same thing or would it be very different and beneficial for someone who went last year?
It's a good question, they don't really specify, I'm not sure.
I really enjoyed last, was it two years ago now?
Geez, it was.
Yeah, cause I was out last time.
It was two years ago, I really enjoyed going, I would go again, unless someone that hadn't gone really wants to go.
It was last winter, cause when we were in Portsmouth, it was freezing out.
I, I will, I will say, I mean, even housing issues aside, if you just wanna like learn about public engagement and strategies and best practices and all that sort of stuff, um, it's great, and it can apply to housing engagement, but really kind of any kind of engagement you do in life. Um, there's some really great stuff there.
Are you gonna be one of the speakers?
I don't know. I'll, I'll find out next week, I suppose.
Oh, did you get your, are you with U N H now?
I am.
Oh, good, nice, congratulations.
They haven't told me what, I'm gonna be part of it exactly yet, my first day is Tuesday.
Well, congratulations.
That's awesome.
Good luck.
For you.
Cooperative extension?
Yes.
So I don't know.
Kind of money is, is it not, I'm not asking. Is it Fed money or is it, does it?
Oh, the funding of the cooperative extension, is that what you're asking?
Cooperative extension, that's, okay.
Um, it's a national program for land grant universities out of the Department of Agriculture. And so roughly speaking, give or take, it, it depends on details locally, but it's about a third from federal government to the Department of Agriculture.
Federal government, okay.
It's, um, partially through the university system.
So state, okay.
And partially through the county, so there are, so there are.
So it's all three?
So, so individual counties also provide part of the funding.
Okay.
So if you wanna know where my sal- new salary comes from, it's from the.
And it's not always. So the ticket sold at the county fair. Those admission tickets, they're helping to fund you. In central New York, where I was, the nearest cooperative extension was associated with Cornell University, which is also a land grant school, but.
Well, Cornell is weird because they have the land grant park and.
And the Ivy League park.
They're like, four of the colleges are, are, are state schools and three of them are private. Yeah, so it's like SUNY Cornell and then it's like private Cornell.
Yeah, but it's all part of the same university.
Yeah.
What town is Cornell in? My grandson graduated from Ithaca College. He lives in Hollywood now.
Hoxton.
Oh, gosh, sorry.
He's a cinematographer, I think he's on work.
So do you need Joseph to know who's interested in going, cause again, I would be in, off to the side unless someone doesn't.
I don't think I make the time commitment.
Yeah, it'd be great if the board is, in, just because the session is, uh, the sessions do start in January, if the board is able to choose sort of the designees, then we can make sure that those people are, uh, and I don't recall what the stipend amount is, but don't assume it's anything.
Two fifty or something?
I think that's about right. Yeah. It'll, it'll cover your, your travel and meals and things. And two of the sessions are webinars.
The short sessions are webinars.
Am I the only one?
No, I'm interested. I'm just.
Yeah, when, when are they?
Uh, so January twenty ninth, nine AM to ten thirty AM.
Every two weeks.
Nine to one.
The meetings were held in Concord.
Usually they.
The webinars. Is that a Saturday?
Yeah, Wednesdays.
And I think if you have to miss one, I think it's okay, but.
Yeah, that's what they.
I definitely can't do Wednesdays.
Yeah.
February twenty sixth, when I'm gone, so.
Well, thank God the twelfth is ski day at PSU. Instead of going skiing.
Ski day, housing day.
Where's Plymouth State skiing now?
Tenny and Cannon.
Nice.
Well, ski day, well, ski day is, is held at Tenny nowadays.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. It's, well, it was, it was at ski, ski day was at Tenny last year.
It's probably at Tenny.
You get more miles per day.
Yeah.
So anyone interested?
I don't think I can.
And unfortunately.
I'm interested. I'm gonna have to see if I have scheduling conflicts. I might not be able to.
So if people are interested and they can't answer tonight, they can contact you presumably?
Sure. We can, and you know, I think the, the, in sort of, call them uh, non webinars, there's really no recording of that. There's nothing they can really do. They're kind of interactive sessions, as I understand. But the webinars, I expect will be available in some capacity, uh, recorded for people who would like to see them. So if we wanna say the first three people to email are the planning board's three representatives, just so I know, just so I have some sort of, you know, for stipend purpose.
And I think we should, I think the alternate should be eligible just as much as members.
Um.
If they're available.
Where are the in person? Did I just not read that properly?
Are they in Bedford?
Yeah.
We were Bedford before.
Which is where New Hampshire Housing is.
Concord.
Which is just south of Bedford. Or that's north of Bedford.
We did go to Bedford.
It's past Tilton.
Was Bedford?
We did go to Bedford.
Bedford's quite a bit south of Concord.
Maybe one session last time that was on location somewhere, if I remember right.
That was Portsmouth.
Free zone. Still south of Tilton. We walked like seven miles.
Do you register first, Joseph, or do we register ourselves?
Um, I believe each person can register individually.
Okay.
South of Tilton, that's greater Boston. And also last time, I remember that there was some open seats.
Sky gets darker.
So if you wanted to jump in on one anyways, it wasn't like, you weren't like locked out.
No.
So I wanna briefly mention.
Traffic slows down once you get past north of Tilton.
Um, while we're on the hop, um, she doesn't have a really, the hop, never, never mind. But I, I also wanna mention, um, which is not on the agenda here, but um, do we wanna do any? Well, I guess it's, it's, it's engagement related. Do we wanna do any um, informational engagement for the zoning amendments this year? Be they videos, handouts, or I would certainly say a session of the board and like our, our work session in March might be a good time just to happen to kind of open QA, Q and A for people to show up.
Sure.
And ask questions.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So I see that happening. Um, do we want to do um, a video again?
I wanna opt out of the video.
Did you make your acting debut last time?
He did.
Yeah, I mean.
The first one was really tough. The second one went pretty smoothly. The one where I actually wrote the script.
Right. Before that, it was the guys and dolls in nineteen ninety eight and then. Yeah, the first one wasn't smooth.
You know, I remember that banner on the high school wall. I remember that guys and doll banner. Yep.
I think it's a great idea. I would give, lend the opportunity to anyone else if they'd like to get behind the camera.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
All right. So we should also, um, I'm not sure we're gonna talk about tonight, but start to think about. We're gonna do a housing master plan and we should really start discussing what that's gonna look like and how we're gonna work with Barrett Planning again, since we talked about that, um, to make this happen. And I'm sure Judy and the rest of the crew there will have some ideas again. But we should start talking about that soon and, and talk, in addition to talking about what we're actually gonna do, which we probably have really had to discuss with Judy and whoever, Alexis, whoever else we work with. For the people from Barrett Planning, if you weren't here then. There is also the question of, so last time we had a um, housing, housing committee. And I will say, we were incredibly productive and it was really successful. And it was also a hell of a lot of work and commitment. And I'm not certain if we have the stomach for that again, to have that kind of level of separate committee engagement or whether we can write it right off the board during our work sessions. You don't have to answer that right now.
I would be willing to try to do it at work sessions.
Yeah. Um, but at least think about that so we can kind of know how to move forward.
Who's on the committee?
From the, it was you, me, you started as committee member, then became a board member.
Oh.
Brian from MBSB, Patty Beederman.
And Brian from PSU.
Brian from PSU.
Brian Eisenhower?
Brian Eisenhower.
Yes, we had some community members.
Bruce Wiget, yeah, Bruce Wiget.
Bruce Wiget was there.
It was every Tuesday for eighteen months.
It was a lot. Every Tuesday.
With a few days off, like here and there, if we weren't as busy. But there were some times when we were like straight for every single week.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of discussion that goes on during them. That's the thing. They're, they're very time consuming. We're limited, we limited it to an hour each meeting.
It was difficult.
But it was really hard.
Yeah.
But on the other hand, it was really productive to do it. But it's a huge commitment.
Yeah, I think if we can handle it, maybe we can start it within the board, in our work sessions and see how that goes.
Yep. What's our timeline for using hop monies?
Mid twenty twenty six is really when the project should be expected to wrap up.
Yep.
Does a, would Barrett Planning have like a process to take us through, like how to write these things? Or is it something that we, they like advise? What's the capacity?
I imagine they're gonna do a lot of the writing themselves for us, my guess. And to actually do the engagement with the community to do a successful master plan chapter.
We have to do.
As members of the community, that's really, a lot of that's gonna fall on us.
But they do a lot of facilitating.
But they do a lot of facilitating, I guess.
Yeah, that's what they do. This is, this is their dig.
Yeah, we're, we're their client, right?
Yeah.
They get to take care of us. That's cool.
And they're good.
They did, they did a great job with the, the forums we had previously.
Yep, they were easy to work with too.
Yep.
All right. So good. So this, if, come up with ideas and we'll talk more at our next um, work session, which is in a couple of weeks. Few weeks, couple of weeks.
Three weeks.
Didn't count. Um, thank you. Engineering discussion?
Shall we? Let's do it.
Oh.
I think, yeah. Yeah, are we moving forward with that?
Or, or we?
Well, that's kind of what I've, I've got some, um, a group of people that have volunteered to be part of this committee. It's Mark Halloran, Joseph and Scott Whedon, Steve from the Highway and Norma Jean from Highway. And I guess what we kind of wanted to know from the board is, um, would you like to help us put together an RFP or do you have requests that you wanna see in the RFP? Or do you just want us to go ahead and do it and we'll get it done and present it?
Is this for?
I guess my.
This is for, um, for engineering consultants. We currently have an engineering consultant who is a, he is a one man band and he's very good. He does, but um, we've had some applications that have been presented to us in the past year or two that have needed a little bit more information and I don't know whether it's time or what, traffic for instance. So we just would like to broaden our pick of engineers. So we'd like to put something out to get various engineers to give us um, their expertise, what they're, what they can help us with and a pricing for that.
Is there consensus that we want one contract for all of our engineering consulting needs? Or do we wanna have like a, a planning engineer versus a highway engineer for the highway department?
In, in speaking with everybody, pulling them, just talking to them in general, we have not met yet. It looks like we'd like to try to find some, um, a few firms or whoever would like to be involved that would have more than one or two people on board that could help out in specific areas. These engineering, they're, they're, they're getting really busy and time is a lot of time. It's of the essence for things. So we really haven't, we haven't sat down together to talk about what we're looking for.
So, I mean, I, I'm, I was thinking about this the last couple of weeks. Not the whole time, but just.
You have a new job starting soon.
Siding home.
And so we have an engineer we work with, um, who in general are pretty happy with. And it's providing some pretty good rates for us. Um, on the other hand, we did get some kind of frustrated when it came down to like the traffic study for the hotel especially. And we did not feel we got what we were looking for.
What was the frustration?
We wanted a more extensive traffic study rather than just a kind of.
Poll study.
Rather, rather than a, a, like a once over of the, of the study that was presented by, by, by the applicant. We wanted to really, really kind of dig deeper. And we didn't, and we didn't get that.
More advice from the town.
And so I'm basically looking at this and saying, I understand the frustration. I, I felt it myself and I was very much feeling that. At the same time, I know we have a longstanding and good relationship with someone who is providing pretty good rates. And before, for me at least, before we go through with an RFP and start like calling other, other people in, which might be a good idea, I'd wanna sit down with Mike Vignali and actually have a conversation, not me personally, but like Scott or Joseph Ward, Ward, whoever, um, some combination, and have a conversation about what our frustrations have been, what has worked well. And um, in other words, I don't wanna sour an existing good relationship. Even though we're frustrated, I'd rather express the fact that we are frustrated. We are considering this and have that conversation before we move forward with an RFP.
Well, RFP doesn't mean we're doing business with someone else.
No, it doesn't. But I mean, if he gets wind of it, it might kind of sour things.
I think we should do it at the same time. It's like you don't have one attorney for everything throughout life. You have your one attorney that's your quarterback. You're like, hey, I need, you know, I need these legal resources. And if that attorney isn't the proficient one, he's gonna say, he or she's gonna say, call this firm, call that firm, you know. So I don't think it's a bad thing to visit.
No, I know. I, I, I don't think it's bad. I mean, I'm, overall, I'm in favor of this. I just think since we have a long existing relationship.
I was, no, I was giggling about the idea of having an attorney. Sorry.
As, 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 as at the very least a courtesy to our current contracted engineer to have that conversation before we start making things public with an RFP and stuff like that. And I, I just think in terms of how we deal with people we work with, it might be good to do things in that order.
Yeah, I.
I mean, I, I.
And I'm not saying.
And feel free to like overrule me.
What's he gonna say? Yeah, no. Who am I to make an assumption?
I don't think, I, I, I don't think it's, and we're not eliminating him at all by any stretch of the imagination. But I just think that a bit.
It's giving him a heads up.
I agree. No, and, and I think that was part of the plan. I think that was, he was going to be letting on all this anyway, but I, um, and I, I'm personally not disappointed in what he did for us. I don't think he did anything poorly. I don't think he's given us any bad advice. I, I, I'm, I'm not on that bandwagon. I don't, I, so I don't know what you're referring to. But all that aside, um, I guess, I just wanna know what the board would like us to do because.
I think the bandwagon, just to clarify about the poorly part. I think when we talked about getting a second traffic study for the hotel, I think we weren't asking for a review of the current traffic study. We were asking for something a bit more expansive. And I think we even said, if you need to bring someone else in, I think.
Did we, did we say that initially? I can't remember.
I always sort of said that.
That if, if you need to bring someone else in to help with this, um, we're totally open to that and even about, you know. And I think when we got the study back, at least for me, and I think some other board members as well, I think we felt like, wow, we wanted more. Cause it's a really important issue to us. And we didn't wanna just have, say, did the numbers look good here? But we wanted like a bit more legwork.
It did seem really impressive.
And so I think that's where some of the frustration is. But I think.
Understood.
On a much longer stretch, I think we're also really happy in many ways. And that, that's why I don't wanna kind of, I just wanna be careful not to sour anything.
I certainly understand what you're saying. So I guess, um, Joseph and I were talking about it and we decided we probably should just find out. What would you like us to do? We have a group of people that are more than happy. They're actually excited to do something like this. Do we ask some residents to join in on this, to be on the committee? Do we keep it at this? Do we do it? What, what, what would you like us to go? How would you like us to proceed?
Can I, can I add my two cents?
Mike, Mike had a.
Nope, let Michael go.
Let me add my two cents. In Nashville, in over, since the seventies where towns and cities can't afford having dedicated traffic controls, folks and so on, and as we progress with technology, a lot of towns and communities, especially cities, actually go to the GSA pricing at a state level. When you go to GSA, professional engineers register with the site and you don't have to go to an RFP process. You actually go direct to them. So the state has a list of certified GSA approved vendors that you could pick from. Obviously, if we need an engineer, um, and we don't wanna go through a bidding process, they, we can obviously look at these lists and pick locals if they're on it. But GSA is.
Yeah, I think we might be below GSA rates at this point. I'm not really sure.
So my, my, what I'm wondering is, should we just maintain our existing relationship? And if we need specialized services, then you go to a GSA engineer outside of that. I'm, I'm a little concerned that, you know, it seems like we've had a good relationship with Mike Vignali. Maybe there've been up occasions when we've wanted more and maybe that's on us to, to find somebody who provides more or ask him. But at the same time, you know, if, let's say we go out to bid and, and we ask him for an RFP and he comes back with prices that are twice as high as he's charging us now and they're still cheaper than everybody else. Like what do we gain? That's, I mean, I just don't know what the market is.
It's a, it's a real, it's a possibility, cause he is pretty low, I think.
Right.
What's the GSA? What's GSA?
General Services Administration is a federal agency that is in charge of expenditures and all that kind of.
I guess, I, I don't, I don't know engineer prices well enough to know if, if, if we're in a good situation or if not. And I, I would want somebody with some knowledge of what we'd be looking at to weigh in on that before we decide if we're gonna go out to bid on, on that service. Cause it seems like we're doing okay.
Mike?
I would agree with John one hundred percent that we wanna be careful. Don't step on any toes and. Probably I've, besides Neil, I've worked with Mike Vignali quite a bit. And been exposed to him, not as much as Neil for his years on the select board, cause the select board's very, works a lot with Mike Vignali. And my experience of over four years on the select board was you couldn't pick a better person to do what Mike's doing. And Neil knows, Mike's done things without charging us, a lot of things in the past, without charging us at all. We would lose that right off. And so I'd be concerned about upsetting the cart at this point because it's, he's done such an incredible job. But I would agree that he probably didn't have the, um, didn't have the, uh, the ability to do a traffic study because that's kind of a specialized engineering. And that should have been up on our shoulders to ask, and I don't think Mike would have bothered at all if we said, hey, we're gonna go get a traffic study, our own, and have it done and whether we charged the applicant or, or whatever. But that should have been on us to get a special, something special, not to ask Mike, so.
And if I recall correctly, Joseph, his contract allows him to subcontract out for specialized activities?
I do believe that's correct.
That's interesting.
So he subs out?
We, we could.
He could, if we, if we needed something specialized, like a better traffic study.
And that's, I think that's the only thing we really need to do. And Joe at Highway, I think has a very good relationship with Mike.
He's retiring.
He is retiring.
Steve is the one that is there now and they do have an MOU now with Mike. New MOU with him, so.
And I would think Highway would have a huge, uh, Mike, was he Joe's second? I, I don't know who, Steve?
Steve is.
Yeah, that's Mike, that's Joe's second that's been there for a while. The young guy tall. So it would be inter, I would think his input would be real, cause he's, he's had that same experience as Joe has with. Like I would have a conversation with Stephen. You said he's gonna be on your.
He was, but it doesn't sound like we really need to go forward with it.
I mean, if the town's going up for service, for a bid for other services, I mean, i- i- is the town looking at, at getting engineer quotes for other, other work? Are they, is the town happy with Mike for other aspects?
I believe he is, I believe the select board already has him under contract, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh.
For other, the planning, it's two separate contracts.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I'm thinking, I wouldn't want to just like disband this all right away and say, let's not go forward with it. But have a conversation. And let them know, for example, like, if we ask you for something that maybe might be a bit off of your own kind of wheelhouse or whatever, like, really use that part of your contract that says, like, please sub out. And get someone who can like jump in on this, because we were a little bit frustrated with that. But we want to maintain this relationship. And see how that conversation goes. And if that conversation goes well, then you just like, you stick with it. You're shaking your head.
I'm shaking my, I'm shaking my, I don't think you have that conversation. I think you have that conversation next time we have a project where we might want him to subcontract out.
Yep, fair enough.
When it comes up. Yeah, when it comes up. I don't think, I think, I think if you have that conversation now, you could possibly sour the relationship.
Yep.
But just say, hey, you know, we're looking at this project. We think, you know, we would encourage you to, you know, bring in outside consultant with it to make sure your, the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
So we need to remember that that's part of his contract.
I guess I was just trying to kind of come to a kind of compromise situation. But if you don't even need a compromise, then I'm fair not, like, even going there.
It seems like everyone's happy with it. We've had one situ, you know, it seems like we had this one situation where like, we didn't get what we truly wanted, and that might have been a miscommunication of expectations of what would happen in that situation. I think right now, we don't want to rock the boat with a gentleman who's providing good services to the town overall.
At a price that we can...
And just make, at a price that's good, and just make sure that we clearly could, you know, convey expectations on projects in the future.
And I might add, his bedside manner is amazing. He's very easy to work with. So, I agree, Jason.
Okay, I'll just let everybody know. No problem.
Thank you for like putting this up for us. I think, I think it is an important conversation and it can get us kind of in a mindset, if we do see something like this coming up again, where we know what to say.
Yeah.
Sure.
We know that that's part of the contract.
Yeah.
And he may, he may come to us in six months and say, hey, I'm retiring.
That's true.
Well, there's also that.
I'll work, I'll work for you for the next six months, but...
That's his choice to make and he can contact us when he does.
Let's play it by ear, I'd say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you very much, Sue.
Does anybody have any other business?
I do have...
Joseph has more business.
Yeah, one quick other business. So, the zoning board of adjustment has in the past often had a planning board representative serving on it as a sort of representative of the planning board, but as a zoning board member. We did have that with Peter Julia, but he is no longer on the planning board. The zoning board is a bit light in terms of membership, so I'm not asking anybody to commit. But the zoning board has been trying to come up with some ideas to get their numbers up a little bit. So if anybody on the planning board would potentially like to fill that role, the zoning board is, you know, they meet on the first Tuesday of every month at seven o'clock, if they have business to hear.
Once a month?
Once a month.
Oh.
And it is...
If they have business.
How long are their meetings?
Sometimes they have business.
Yeah, really?
It ranges from, it ranges from thirty minutes to two hours. I mean, it really can range.
They're not crazy like us.
No, they probably met five or six times last year.
Wow.
Yeah, they don't, only if they have an application.
It all depends on the wave.
And so, if you would like to, I know the select board has been asking for folks to meet with the board before putting in their request to be appointed to that board. If anybody is interested though and wants to arrange that, you know, come to the next zoning board meeting perhaps and introduce yourself and ask to be appointed. There is now that opening, now that Peter Julia is no longer on the, on the planning board.
Is he still on zoning?
He's still on zoning, yeah.
Neil, what's your input on this whole thing?
I've already been on the zoning board.
And the zoning board is allowed one, but there is one planning board member. There is a full member slot open, however, and four alternate slots open on the zoning board, so they are, but there could be a full member slot for someone who would like to, who would like to take it potentially.
Do you attend those meetings?
I do, yep. And I, David Kent is currently the chair. The other members are Stephanie Halter, Malik Hammond, Peter Julia, and Tom McLaughlin, who has been on the zoning board for a long time and has a great deal of experience. But he's currently on the Water and Sewer District Board as well, so he has stepped back to be an alternate only on the zoning board. But he still participates because, of course, we don't have five full members, so, yeah, those are the other members.
And the zoning board's in a weird place, right? If, if they don't have full board presence at a meeting, the applicant can actually deny the hearing. Is that correct?
That's correct. So typically, the zoning board would offer to an applicant, if there are less than five members, the zoning board would offer, if the applicant would prefer to wait for a future meeting.
With a full board.
With a full board. And if the zoning board asks that, then, then the applicant has the right to say, no, I want to go forward with less than. But it, it does take an affirmative vote of a majority of the full members. So regardless of, if you have three members of the zoning board present, it takes a vote of three to pass anything.
Unanimous.
Correct.
So they oversee, like, obviously special exception and variances?
Those are the big ones. Also, appeal of administrative decisions on zoning matters. So that could be anything from, if the planning board approves or denies a site plan on the basis of a zoning interpretation, that could be appealed to the zoning board. If the building inspector issues a permit that someone feels is wrongly issued, or vice versa. If he declines to issue a permit that someone feels should have been issued, they can appeal that to the zoning board. If I tell someone, you know, you need a special exception for that, and they disagree, they can go to the zoning board and appeal any, any administrative decision by, by really anyone. So they have a, and there is one other kind of weird thing that they never really do. That's an equitable waiver of dimensional requirements. If someone accidentally, by good faith error, put something, put a building up in violation of a dimensional requirement, like too close to the setback, too close to the property line, but it can be shown that it was a good faith error, the zoning board can allow that to essentially be considered conforming. But that one doesn't really ever come up. I mean, of course, I say that and it will probably get used five, next month.
And in general, they're a bit more of a judicial sort of bodies than us, and certainly Dave Kent will make sure of that.
They have...
I don't mean it in a bad way.
I recall, I think when the state put in, there's now a state land use review board. I think, when that was created, I think actually some of the adjudication powers were taken from the ZBA and assigned to them. Or maybe pulled from the state superior court.
Yeah, it went to the court system, so maybe that's the next step before it ties up.
Maybe, maybe, if you go past the ZBA, you can appeal a ZBA decision to the state superior court, but I think those now go to the...
Make a motion? Do you want to make a motion? Dominate you?
The state.
I thought we had to appoint somebody.
That's true, yeah.
All right, so before we get too lost in the ins and outs of the zoning board.
Thank you, Joseph.
You did a great job selling it, Joe.
Thank you.
Are there public comments?
What comments? Look at the screen.
Nobody on Zoom.
Anybody want to walk out there and be...
Check the hall?
Um, I can't end, I can't end the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
A second it.
That's a lot of seconds. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, 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 no. Kate, we are adjourned.
Thank you all.